It's ready when you are.
Thank you very much, Luke Sinclair Chair. Welcome, everybody, to the June 23, 2021 meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. We'll get into our business, but first I'd like to turn it over to Becky Pepper, who can explain the rules for this Zoom call.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Becky Pepper, Planning Manager. Joining me here in the City Commission Room is Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, and Kyle Kobe, who will be helping to facilitate the Zoom video portion of the meeting. We'll also work along the side the Chair, who's on video remote, to facilitate the video proceeding, the meeting proceedings. Currently, we have everyone muted so that we can talk through the general ground rules for tonight's meeting. This meeting is being broadcast, recorded and broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon, found in the lower left-hand corner of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you're muted, a red line will appear over the icon. This will make it easier for everyone to hear the meeting. Just remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. You can also turn your video camera on and off by clicking the video icon in the menu. For the purposes of this public meeting, please keep your video on for the duration. If you're participating by phone, you can enter star six to mute and unmute your phone. Somewhere on your Zoom screen, you will see a choice to toggle between Speaker and Gallery View. Speaker View shows the active speaker, while Gallery View tiles all of the meeting participants. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. Members of city staff must also state their name and title each time they speak. And I would also ask the applicants and members of the public to identify themselves each time they speak to ensure that everyone is able to follow along. When public comment is sought on an item, individuals participating via Zoom should use the Raise Your Hand feature. Windows and Mac users can access this feature through the Participants button, which is located at the bottom of their screen. Android and iPhone users can access this feature through the More button, located at the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. And for those calling in by phone, you may dial star nine. Individuals will be called upon in the order they appear on the Meeting Host screen. And when you're called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The Chair will then call for in-person public comment for those who are physically present. Staff will direct you to the podium to speak while following social distancing and safety protocols. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, staff will call on each Commissioner individually to provide their vote. Staff will then need, staff will then need, announce whether the motion carried and count of the vote. I would again remind everyone to please mute yourself when you're not speaking, and now I'll turn the meeting over to the Chair.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you, Becky. So we, there's no general business tonight, so we'll look to Section B, the Communications. Do we have any written communications from the public that need to be received?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. All communications were included as part of your packet.
Very good, Luke Sinclair Chair. Are there any written communications from staff or Planning Commissioners or other Commissioners that need to be received?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. We have none this evening.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you. What about any written action of waiver requests or determinations made by the city engineer?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. None of those tonight either.
Thank you, Luke Sinclair Chair. Do we have any Commissioners that need to disclose any ex parte communications? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I did meet with Mark and Carrie Smeltzer at their home and had a site visit for item number two. Everything that we talked about is probably included in the communication that Carrie Smeltzer has, has in our packet.
Thank you, Luke Sinclair Chair. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes, Commissioner Ashworth, I too had a meeting with a group of neighbors at the site for item number two, and the items discussed are in the packet.
Thank you very much, Luke Sinclair Chair. Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. Same as Commissioner Ashworth and Commissioner Willie.
Thank you, Luke Sinclair Chair. Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes, Commissioner Rexrode, I was at the same meeting with Commissioners Ashworth and Commissioner Carter. Same feedback.
Thank you very much, Luke Sinclair Chair. Any other disclosures of ex parte communications? Very good. How about, are there any Commissioners that need to abstain from any specific agenda items? I'm not seeing any. Glad to hear that, Luke Sinclair Chair. With that, the next portion is our time of general public comment. This is a time where we open up the floor to members of the public that would like to offer thoughts and comments on items of general interest, not having to do with any of the specific agenda items that we're going to talk about tonight. If there is any member of the public on the call, if you'd raise your hand either physically or with a little digital feature, please do so, and I will recognize you. And Kyle, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand. Would you be able to confirm that and then also just confirm for me that there's no one in the Commission chambers too?
Kyle Kobe with Planning. I'm not seeing any hands going up either, and we do not have anybody here for general public comment.
Very well. Luke Sinclair Chair. With that, we'll turn to our regular agenda. We have two items tonight. Both of them have subparts. There was a third item, but it has been deferred. So we'll just jump into our first item, which is 1A and B. 1A is to consider approving a request to rezone Z-21-00142, approximately 0.71 acres from RS7 PD District to RSO District located at 1223 Iowa Street. That's 1A. 1B is to consider approving a preliminary plat, PP-21-00143, for Mabel's subdivision and associated variance for reduction of right-of-way width along a principal arterial street located at 1223 Iowa Street as well. And for the presentation from Planning Staff, I believe we have Catherine.
Yes, good evening Commissioners. Catherine Reed, Planning Staff, and I'm here, we have three, well, two items, but three interrelated action items. So you'll need to remember after I talk about all of the items that you will need to take three separate actions on these items. The first, as mentioned, is a rezoning request. The property is located at 1223 Iowa Street. The proposed rezoning is for infill development, and they're proposing rezoning from the RS7 PD, which is Planned Development Overlay District, to RSO, which is single residential, dwelling residential. So this particular property, as I said, is infill development. The reason for the application, the property owner wishes, while the RS7 PD zoning district is no longer applicable, that previous development has not developed as it was intended or as it was approved back in the day. They would like to rezone to a comparable zoning district that would permit residential uses as well as neighborhood office or professional type uses. So that is the reason for the request. This particular property is unplatted property. There is, as you saw, an associated preliminary plat with this property to also plat the property. Their proposal is to split the property and rezone to RSO, and they would be developing with two duplexes on the site. The intention is for there to be a mix of, or the opportunity for a mix of low-density residential and/or professional office type uses on the Iowa Street corridor. So in reviewing for rezoning application, of course, we take into account the eight criteria, whether or not it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the nearby zoning, and its compatibility to nearby zoning, neighborhood characteristics, whether or not it's an area plan, the suitability as it is restricted, whether or not the property is vacant, any detrimental effects that it might have on neighboring properties, and whether there is a gain versus hardship if you were to deny the application. So this particular proposal to rezone, staff has found that it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This provides an opportunity for infill development, which is one of the goals of the comprehensive plan. The property is not located in a specific sector plan area. This particular property has developments all around it. It's never been platted. All of the property around it has been rezoned and replatted under previous actions, and it's developed over time. And it is along the Iowa Street corridor, which is a principal arterial street. So whether or not staff found that it was suitable for the neighboring surrounding zoning districts, they're proposing to rezone to RSO, which is immediately adjacent to the property to the north. There are some similar uses in the RSO District along that Iowa Street corridor that has small business or office type uses and residential uses. It is on the edge of a residential RS7 neighborhood, the edge being the Iowa Street corridor, and this property immediately abuts the Iowa Street corridor. So staff did find that it's compatible to nearby zoning and a surrounding property development. Let's take a pulse. The property is not vacant. It's currently occupied by a single detached dwelling. This particular rezoning would not prohibit that use if for some reason the concept plans were changed and they did not want to develop as duplexes. The single detached dwelling could still be permitted in the RSO District. So we would not be eliminating any single-family residential. The opportunity is still there for that. But the rezoning does open up the opportunity for other types of low-density housing, as well as neighborhood office or professional office type uses. Staff found that there were no significant or impacts detrimental to neighboring properties. As I mentioned, the surrounding zoning is very similar to what has developed around. There is RS7 to the west, RSO to the north. There is additional RS7 and RM12 across Iowa Street. Primarily, this area has developed with single-family detached dwellings. There's one multifamily development slightly to the southeast. And then north along the Iowa corridor and scattered among that Iowa corridor in this area is small office-type commercial uses. So staff found that it is compatible with the character of the neighborhood and meets the overall goals of the comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval for a rezoning proposal from RS7 with the PD Overlay District to RSO. Moving into the preliminary plat, again, this preliminary plat is proposing to divide this unplatted property into two separate lots, both of which would maintain frontage on Iowa Street. However, because this is a principal arterial and additional or driveways are prohibited on arterial streets, these solution proposed by our engineering department for safe access off Iowa Street is to maintain the existing access that currently exists on the property without introducing an additional driveway. And so these two parcels, while they both maintain the adequate amount of frontage on Iowa Street, would take single access off of the existing driveway. So they would orient sort of to the south and taking access off that joint access drive, which would maintain the safe usage of Iowa Street and Article Nine with the prohibition of additional driveways off of a principal arterial. So staff evaluated whether or not this particular proposal to divide the property into two lots conforms to all the criteria for preliminary plating. Staff found that it does. It maintains all of the dimensional standards for lot width, lot area, access. Infrastructure is already surrounding the property. There does, it will require some extensions in public infrastructure during the final plating process, and the applicant will be required to submit public improvement plans at that time. So a preliminary plat, just to refresh your memory, is a part of a two-step process. The preliminary plat is what comes before the Planning Commission, and you all ensure that it conforms to the comprehensive plan and the criteria for land divisions. And then the final plat document, if approved, or if the preliminary plat is, is approved, would come to the planning office, and that's an administrative action, as long as it conforms to the preliminary plat approval. So staff is also recommending approval of the preliminary plat. And then a third action required by the Planning Commission is associated with this preliminary plat is a request for variance from the right-of-way width. So right-of-way width along a principal arterial is required to be 150 feet, and the applicant is requesting that reduction from 150 feet down to 90 feet. So the, the right-of-way width along Iowa Street, which is already in existence, ranges, along the strip, ranges from 80 feet to 100 feet in any given area. The applicant here is proposing to increase what is currently on the site at 80 feet from, to 90 feet. They're not, there's no proposal for additional widening, widening of Iowa Street. Sidewalks and infrastructure are already in, so there is no additional right-of-way required for this particular plat. So the applicant is requesting a variance for the existing condition that, that is adjacent to this site. And so I would be happy to clarify any of those. Oh, I should mention that when there's a variance request, there are three criteria that we consider for approval of a variance, and all three criteria are to be met to grant the variance. And in review, staff did find that all three criteria in this instance have been met and are recommending approval of the variance request as well. I would be happy to answer any questions or provide any clarifications if you should have them.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you very much, Catherine. For the applicant, I believe we have Dean Grobe.
Yes, good evening Commissioners. Dean Grobe, Grove Engineering, property owner and resident at 1223 Iowa. I don't have much to add. I think Catherine did a great job of explaining everything. You know, I think with the zoning, I looked at kind of all possible options, and you know, the RSO seemed to fit in kind of threefold. One, it's, it's the same zoning as the adjacent property. It gives me a little flexibility. I'm not quite to retirement age, but would like to move my office to my home, which may ultimately be a home occupation category, but was concerned if I did something that overstepped those bounds, you know, then I couldn't have my office there. And, and thirdly, my intention is to put a, a second duplex where the existing house is, but with the cost of lumber, several people have suggested that maybe that house could be renovated, maybe resituated. The foundation needs work, but it could stay, or it could be remodeled and have another unit put with it for a duplex. So that just seemed to be kind of the best fit, how I got to RSO. I think the plating is pretty straightforward. One thing with the, the cross-axis easement, we have room, you know, the lots have room to turn around, so there'll never be any need for anybody to be backing out on Iowa to enter or exit the property. So, and, and it may not be evident, but the property behind it is owned by myself and my six siblings. We don't do anything with the property, but no, and so we just maintain it. And the thoughts that, you know, some development later for the city has indicated, you know, any access from, or any use of the, or access from Iowa would be prohibited for that subdivision. So it's just a temporary drive until that gets redeveloped. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. If anybody's got anything.
Thank you, Mr. Grobe. Luke Sinclair Chair. I don't show anybody as being registered to comment on this, but now is the time for public comment. If there is anybody on this call that would like to speak, you would have three minutes to offer your comments. Just raise your hand digitally or physically.
Kyle Kobe with Planning. Right now, I'm not seeing any hands going up, and we do not have anyone in the room to speak on this item.
Okay. Luke Sinclair Chair, then we'll bring it back to, to the Commission for discussion. And just to confirm, before we launch in, Catherine, we, there'd be one vote on 1A on the rezoning, and then actually two separate votes on 1B, one for the plat and then one for the variance. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. So there would be three motions and three action votes.
Okay. Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you very much. With that, are there any questions or comments that any Commissioners have? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I have a question for Catherine. So in Mr. Grobe's letter in probably, well, not, in probably item 1B, there's mention of a second variance request for rear setback. Has that already been resolved before it got to us?
No, so that is scheduled to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that is a setback variance, which is something that's impacted by the actual construction that would take place on the site and not a land division action. So that variance is going to be.
Got it. Thank you.
Luke Sinclair Chair. Anybody else? Commissioner Rexrode?
Just thank you, Commissioner Rexrode. Question for Mr. Grobe. The area immediately behind that which you intend to build, it contains a barn and a bit of activity. What, what activity is back there today? And do you anticipate that changing once you build the new structures?
No, as I mentioned, my brother and I own the property that's being discussed to see me, but myself and my six siblings own that. It belonged, originally was part of, they both were part of one property that my grandparents bought in 1945. My aunt got the property in discussion tonight. My dad got the property in the back, and so it transferred to the seven kids. And it's, it's kind of by committee, so they can't figure out who wants to do what. But someday, it would be RS7, and it would be developed from University Drive and Parish Road west of this property. So right now, we just mow the property and hang out there, and with all the seven kids, we kind of store all the junk that everybody has on, on that property, but, you know, no future use at this point.
Commissioner Rexrode, thank you.
Luke Sinclair Chair. Any other questions? Commissioner Carter?
Thank you, David Carter, Commissioner. Mr. Grobe, I noticed from the staff report that the, the house on the site was built in about 1920. Is that right?
I don't, that I don't know. It was, it was an existing house, and my grandparents moved in in 45. It desperately needs work. I lived there, but I couldn't rent it as it is or do anything else with it. Again, still trying to figure out how we incorporate it into the big picture, but I did draw the line so that it was a legal structure until such time as I figure out what I'm, what we're going to do with it. It, it could possibly be just a single family home, but on a new foundation, and, you know, the, the garages, the detached garage will be removed no matter what. It's dilapidated, and it will go away.
Thank you, Mr. Grobe. David Carter, Commissioner. I, just, just reviewing the report, I mean, I, I think, you know, what you're proposing here seems to fit, you know, the objective, objectives of Plan 2040 for infill development. The thing that just really, not quite alarms me, but I think is, is a cause for, for pause, is the thought of, you know, demolishing 100-year-old residents. And I, I would just encourage you, it's your, your property, but I would really encourage you to look for alternatives that would allow you to either incorporate that as part of the eventual, you know, solution, or to keep it or move it as a single-family residence. Because it, it seems, at least from the outside, like quite a gem, quite a, a, a time capsule. Because it seems, at least from the outside, like quite a gem, quite a, a, a time capsule from semi-royal construction from 100 years ago. And it would just be a shame to lose that piece of architecture.
Dean Grove, Grove Engineering. I would agree, and yes, there's a certain sentimental value in there. And my brother and I that own it, think we're going to have to leave town if destruction is only often because I don't know that we could be there if it has to come down. But yes, I appreciate your suggestion.
Thanks for those comments, Luke Sinclair, Chair. Anybody else have questions for staff or the applicant or general observations? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. A question for either Mr. Grove or Catherine. The cross-access easement that will serve both of these properties, is it also intended to serve the property to the west as it has kind of historically? Or will the property to the west then take its only access from University?
So currently, the western portion of that access easement would be a temporary access to the west. There was extensive discussion about the property to the west. And if that were to ever develop in the future, that would be an extension of roadways that are existing to the west, either University or the one to the north, not from Iowa Street. And at that time, that temporary portion of the easements would close to the west property, once those public improvements were extended to that west portion of this property. So at this time, that western section of the access easement is temporary and it would close once a street access is given at the west end of that west property.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, observations? Does anybody have any thoughts or comments about the variance requested? Nice. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. So we do this quite a bit, the reduction of right-of-way when it fits the right-of-way of the neighboring properties. So this is not out of the ordinary for us. I would just, as I asked Catherine, the 90 feet, you feel like that is sufficient in terms of how it matches just immediately to the north and south of it?
Yes, I think our engineering division was in agreement that 90 feet would be adequate. I mean, in reality, the 80 feet is sufficing now and 90 feet is more than we currently have. So I think that was sufficient for our engineering division and it's consistent with what is already happening along Iowa Street.
Luke Sinclair, Chair. Thank you for that, Commissioner Willie. I guess I would make one observation and that is sort of looking long-term, you know, we try to see what the other possibilities are aside from what is actually being proposed because there's always a chance that something else could happen. And in looking through the other uses that could be made in the RSO district, you know, I feel comfortable at least that this is, this would be appropriate for that stretch of Iowa Street. And I feel fairly comfortable with the rezoning request. Honestly, the plat and the variance as well. But does anybody else have any observations or questions or does someone feel comfortable making, well, before I ask that question, Commissioner Willie, go ahead.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Yes, I'm willing to make a motion and I'll make the first one if somebody else steps in to make the other two. Fair enough. I move, I move to approve the request to rezone approximately 0.71 acres from RS7 PD to RSO based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding it to the City Commission with recommendation for approval.
Very good. Luke Sinclair, Chair. We have a motion to approve the request to rezone and send it on with that recommendation. Do we have a second? I'll give it to Commissioner Rexroad by motion of the hand. Any other questions or comments before we have a vote? I'm not seeing any. Jeff, could you read the roll?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Plank and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroad?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Luke Sinclair, Chair. Very good. Does anybody feel comfortable making a motion as to the, I guess we just take them in order as to the plat or, well, I guess point of order. Does it matter if we, which one of those votes we do first, the variance or the plat?
Jeff can probably answer. I don't know that it matters because you could in theory improve the plat without the variance, so I'll let Jeff confirm.
Jeff Crick, Plank and Development Services. That's correct. We've probably advised.
Do you consider the plat ahead of the variance? Because if you don't approve the plat, there may not be a reason to have the variance at that point.
Luke Sinclair, Chair. Thank you so much. That makes a lot of sense. Okay, is anybody willing to make a motion? Commissioner Ashworth.
Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commissioner. I move that the Planning Commission approve the preliminary plat, PP 21 00143 for Mabel's Subdivision 1223 Iowa Street.
Luke Sinclair, Chair. Thank you much. We have a motion to approve the preliminary plat. Do we have a second? Commissioner Carter raised his hand to second that. Any other comments? Not seeing any. Jeff, can you read the roll?
Jeff Crick, Plank and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroad?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. Luke Sinclair, Chair. That would bring us to, we have one vote left, so the third one as to the variance. Would anyone like to make a motion on the variance? Commissioner Ashworth.
Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commission. I move that the Planning Commission approve the associated variance for the reduction of right-of-way width for principal arteria, arterial for Mabel's Subdivision 1223 Iowa Street.
Luke Sinclair, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. We have a motion to approve the variance to reduce the right-of-way. How about a second? Commissioner Rexroad raised his hand first, I believe, for the second. Other comments before we vote? Okay. Jeff, could you go ahead and read the roll?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Plank and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroad?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you much.
Hey, I wanted to say, just in case everybody didn't figure out, Mabel was my grandmother and that's why the name of the subdivision is called. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. Appreciate that. That'll bring us to our second item of the evening. And this is a three-part item. It's to, the first part of it is to consider approving a request to rezone Z-21-00138, approximately 7.23 acres located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Castle Drive and Bob Billings Parkway from UKU District to RS7 District. The second part of that, 2B, is going to be considering approval of a preliminary plat, PP-21-00139 for Free State Subdivision, a one-lot subdivision on approximately 7.64 acres located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Castle Drive and Bob Billings Parkway. And the third part is that we will consider approving a special use permit, SUP-21-00140 for the development of an electrical substation, a minor utility on approximately 7.64 acres in the southeast corner of the intersection of Castle Drive and Bob Billings Parkway. And I believe from staff, we're going to have Mary presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners. I will be presenting this item and I'm going to pull up a PowerPoint real quick. And as you mentioned, this item has the three parts. There is a rezoning, a preliminary plat, and a special use permit. And I will discuss each one of these and provide staff's recommendation. And then at the end, I'll just provide all three recommendations for you to consider. The rezoning application proposes to rezone the 7.23 acres east of 1844 Castle Drive. This is on the east side of Castle Drive, about midway between Bob Billings Parkway and Clinton Parkway from the UKU or Kansas University District to RS7, single dwelling residential district. Per the cooperation agreement between the City of Lawrence and University of Kansas, only property that is owned by KU or the KU Endowment Association or used strictly for KU purposes can be zoned UKU. Land that is zoned UKU is exempt from the standards of the Development Code. It is governed by that cooperation agreement. When property is sold, it is necessary to rezone it to an appropriate zoning district so that future development on the property will be subject to the standards of the land development code. This map shows the zoning districts in the area. This is one of the golden factors that we consider is whether or not the new zoning is compatible with zoning and land uses in the area. The area highlighted in yellow is land that's zoned UKU and it includes the subject property. The property is bounded on the west by residential properties zoned, one is zoned RM24, which is multi-dwelling residential, and the remainder is zoned RS7, single dwelling residential. These are all developed with detached dwellings except for the one property just south of the multi-dwelling district, which is developed with a city water tower, which is also classified as a minor utility. The property is bounded on the south by a PUD. Prior to the 2006 Development Code, we had the 1966 Development Code and sometime in that frame, we had a provision where you could have a base zoning district and an overlay. And the area south of this property developed during that time, so it had RS2 base district and a planned development overlay on it. When this 2006 Development Code was adopted, that zoning converted to the PUD. However, the base district would have converted to RS7 had it not had the planning development overlay. And so south of the property are detached dwellings and there are apartments further to the south. The proposed RS7 zoning is consistent with zoning in the area and would be compatible with the land uses. The one exception is the RM24 zoning to the west and then the UKU remaining properties. The same uses would be possible on this property as the other RS7 and the PUD zoned properties. A few more uses are possible on the RM24 just due to the fact that it's zoned to a more intense district. The uses permitted in the RS7 District are fairly limited as this is intended to be a single dwelling residential district. Uses that are permitted by right, which means you only need to get a building permit or a site plan, include residential type uses, utilities that are minor, and these would be utilities that serve just one subdivision. For instance, if a subdivision needed a lift station in order to manage your solid ways, something like that. Neighborhood institutions, religious assembly of a small scale are permitted and crop agriculture. Other uses allowed in this district require approval of a special use permit. Some of these are considered low impact, but they could have off-site impacts typically associated with parking or activity, you know, for instance, adult daycare homes or public safety uses. And other uses that may be necessary to locate in residential areas such as utilities or cell towers that could have off-site impacts are also permitted when approved with a special use permit. And the intent is to use this property for an electrical substation. And a special use permit has been submitted for this huge, which is considered a minor utility. The applicant provided this 3D rendering of the proposed use showing the general layout and location. And this graphic shows the layout in plan style. The golden factory view is outlined in the staff report. And while single dwelling zoning is requested, the development project would be a substation. The comprehensive plan notes that community facilities are necessary for the quality of life and they should be operated in a sustainable and efficient manner. And this property is sited in an infill location while being located in the area necessary to operate efficiently. The existing substation is to the east and I'll show that a little later on another slide. They're moving the facility to the west, but it is still in close proximity to the existing distribution lines. The facility would be located adjacent to single dwelling residential uses, but the special use permit process and provisions should minimize off-site negative impacts. The proposed zoning would match other zoning in the area and would be appropriate. With appropriate site design and any needed conditions applied to the special use permit, the proposed use should be compatible with the character of the neighborhood. One thing we look with all special use permits is what would the detrimental impacts be? And that's where special use permits are very useful as we can develop specific conditions to minimize or mitigate these potential negative impacts. Impacts that could be associated with the utility use would include traffic, lighting, noise, aesthetics, maybe activity on the site. And with appropriate conditions applied to the special use permit, the rezoning should have little detrimental effects on nearby properties. And I'll discuss those conditions when I discuss the special use permit. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request from UKU to RS7 and forwarding it to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval. The Development Code requires that land be platted before a building permit can be issued, so it's necessary to plat the property as preparation for the development project. The applicant had originally intended to plat only the 7.23 acres shown, being shown here with my cursor, and requesting a variance on the Planning Commission from the requirement that every platted lot have frontage on a public street. And staff suggested that they include the lot to the west, which they also own, so that they would have the required frontage on a public street. So the applicant did extend the preliminary plat to include this property and this is, the SUP would apply to the entire lot. Well, the property will have the required road frontage width on Castle Drive. Access will not be taken to Castle. They'll be taking temporary construction access from the site to the north to a temporary access easement to Bob Billings Parkway. And once, if it's approved, it's up and running, they would take permitted access to the east through the KU campus through a permitted access easement. And I'll discuss these easements more thoroughly with the review of the special use permit. The subject property would consist of a platted lot at 1844, which is approximately 0.4 acres, and a 7.23 acre unplatted parcel designated here as zero. The two properties would be combined into one platted lot of approximately 7.64 acres and neither lot is currently developed. The plat shows the easements. There is an existing 30-foot-wide West Star easement along the southern property line and shown here at the dash line, there would be a 15-foot utility easement added to that southern property line. The applicant provided information regarding off-site easements, as that's where most of the easements would be located with this project. It shows the temporary access easement that they would use for the temporary access to Bob Billings Parkway during construction. It's marked here in tan with the X's. The permanent access easement is in tan with the circles and that shows connection to the KU streets. There is a temporary construction easement shown here in green, which is on KU property, but allow them to do their grade work and other work they need to do for the project. The blue area is permanent drainage easement and the red areas are permanent distribution line easements. And where the hatchbacks are, that signifies that some of these easements are overlapping. The preliminary plat does comply with the density and dimensional standards in the Development Code for the RS7 District and the review criteria for preliminary plats are met. And staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for Free State Subdivision based on the findings in the staff report. And the third item is a special use permit that's being requested for the construction of a special or a minor utility. of a special, or a minor utility. The Development Code notes that the special use review and approval procedures, we provide a discretionary approval process for uses with unique or widely varying operating characteristics or unusual site development features. The procedure includes public review and evaluation of the user's operating characteristics and site development features, and is intended to ensure that proposed special uses will not have a significant adverse impact on surrounding uses or the community at large. And that's where being able to apply conditions to a special use permit comes in. This shows the subject property outlined in black. The approximate location of the substation is shown in yellow, and if you look to the east, you'll see the location of the existing substation highlighted in orange. So the proposal is to remove this substation once, if this is approved and the substation is constructed, would be to remove this substation and just utilize this one, which would utilize the same distribution lines. The applicant noted that it was not possible to expand the existing substation due to the topography of the area, the need to retain the existing substation while building the new one, the grade change to the entrance, which they said is currently 9% to 10%, and the fact that development would remove a significant number of trees. A special use permit allows the placement of conditions on the use if necessary to minimize offsite impacts. And as I mentioned, the most common impacts with a minor utility would be traffic, lighting, noise, and activity. This facility will be unmanned. There'll be very little traffic generated with it. Minimal maintenance visits would be made to the site. The applicant has requested a modification from the requirement to provide off-street vehicle parking and bicycle parking for this use, due to the fact that the only vehicles accessing the site will be maintenance vehicles. No employees will be on the site, except during maintenance, and the site is not open to the public. The only lighting, the only exterior lighting, will be emergency lighting, and this will only be used when necessary during nighttime maintenance or repairs. A modification is being requested from the exterior lighting standards in the Development Code to allow the use of floodlights rather than full cutoff fixtures, and this would allow them to be on shorter poles. And staff has requested a point-by-point illumination array, so the impact of the lights on adjacent properties can be evaluated, and this would need to be completed if this application is approved, prior to the release of the plans for building permits, to ensure that the lights don't create an impact on neighbors. One communication that we received requested that the lighting be switch operated rather than motion sensor, so that wildlife and wind wouldn't trigger the lights, and this could be added as a condition to the special use permit. A substation would have a visual impact due to its nature and size, and the applicant is proposing an 80-foot wide buffer yard between the facility and the residential properties to the south. This would be landscaped as a Type III buffer yard. This is a type of buffer yard that is required typically between residential and industrial uses. And in addition, they're proposing a 10-foot tall stamped concrete wall, which would be behind the landscaping. Noise is another possible impact, and this noise chart, which was included in the attachment with the staff report, shows sound levels as determined by Yale University. And if you'll notice, suburban areas at night are about 40 decibels. A household refrigerator is about 55, and then business office is about 60 to 65. So I measured sound levels at various places to get a good feeling for these various sound levels, and as noted in the attachment, my backyard, which is in a residential area, there's no commercial or industrial uses nearby, had a reading of 43 to 47 decibels in the morning, so it'd be an average of about 45 decibels. And then I measured the noise level at the fence of various substations. The substation near the fairgrounds is a fairly large substation, and it had a reading of 50 decibels at the fence. The substation that is being replaced on Meadowlark Lane had a reading of 52 decibels, and the substation on 19th Street, east of Iowa, had a reading of 59 decibels. However, it sounded as if the noise was being generated by the building rather than by the substation, but this would come out to an average of about 55 decibels per substation. Staff is recommending a sound study to be conducted to determine the anticipated sound level for the facility, which would help the City Commission to establish a maximum sound level. And staff is recommending the sound level be measured at the south side of the southern wall, and this is to ensure that we're measuring the sound generated by the facility. If we measured further south at the property line, we would be measuring sounds generated by the residential uses, sounds coming in from Castle Drive, and so it just seems like if we're going to try to measure the sounds of the facility, we should take it as close as possible. We did receive some concerns in our public communications received recently. One member of the public was concerned about stormwater and how drainage should be managed. They were concerned there could be flooding to their properties. I referred that question to the city stormwater engineer, and he noted that the swells that they're planning to install around the facility would direct the stormwater flow to the floodplain, and it would probably improve the stormwater flow in the area. Currently, it can just sheet flow to the south, if that's the way the contours lie. A concern was also raised about the impact of the water tower being located next to the substation property, and the city engineer noted that the overflow from the water tower is directed to the east onto this property, but that the swells would direct that water if there was an overflow to the floodplain. And so staff's recommendation is to approve the special use permit with the requested modifications to the, from the parking requirement and from the exterior lighting standards, and forwarding it to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval, subject to the conditions in the report, and this just lists those conditions. One is that point-by-point illumination array of the lighting, the sound study, the approval of the request to modify the offsite parking, the approval of the modification for the exterior lighting standards, and then provision of a revised site plan with any changes needed to address the fire code per the fire inspector's approval. The applicant and the fire inspector are working together to develop a set of standards. Since it's an electrical facility, typical firefighting measures may not be appropriate, and so they're going to work out those conditions, and they would need to revise the site plan once they've reached that, if necessary. And so this is just a summary of the three items. The rezoning, we recommend that to be forwarded to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval. The preliminary plat, we recommend the planning commission approve the preliminary plat. And the special use permit, we recommend to be forwarded to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval, subject to the conditions. You could add the condition that exterior lighting be operated with a switch rather than motion sensors, and also approval of those modifications that were requested. And I know the applicant is present today, and I believe several members of the public are, and I will be happy to answer questions if you have any for me.
Thank you very much, Mary. Luke Sinclair Chair. So we're going to have the applicant do their presentation, then we'll have time for public comments. And I think in light of the fact that there's three items associated with this, I'd like to extend the time, the comment time by a little bit. Public comment, I'd like to give people five minutes apiece, and then the applicant, presumably you have a prepared statement, but if you'd like, you can have an extra five minutes or maybe just use a little more time on your rebuttal after public comment is in, since it seems like there's a lot of interest. But with that said, I think we have Casey Colburn with Bartlett and West signed up. Is that who is going to take over for the applicant?
This is Casey Colburn, Bartlett and West engineer. Dennis Lawler with Evergy, he's the project manager. He will be speaking. There is a team here from Evergy, and then me with Bartlett and West to help answer any questions that you might have. We don't have a real formal presentation, just kind of want to talk through the history of how we got to this point here, and hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Luke Sinclair Chair. Thank you, Casey. Then, Mr. Lawler, would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate this opportunity. We're very excited about this project. It all started because we know that with the growth that's happening in Lawrence, especially with KU, we were looking for something we needed to get reliability, to strengthen the power grid, and again, like I said, for the future growth of Lawrence, anticipating KU to grow, especially West Campus. So we went looking for, we looked at the existing site we had, but as Mary did a great job explaining, the site we have currently, we call it the KU West Campus, it's to get to, you have to go through residential neighborhood, and so that's not conducive to the neighbors. We're also hauling big equipment sometimes through there, and so we, again, we have to go through the neighborhood. So we decided to look elsewhere to see if we can't come up with another opportunity. Well, and especially with the substation site we've got, we actually now could come in off of Bob Billings in Westbrook, and there won't be any residential areas that would be impacted by us traveling back and forth. The other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is, some of the criteria, when we go looking for a substation site, one criteria is we, the applicant has to be willing to sell us the property, and we want the property, the substation site, to be fairly close to existing transmission lines, so we don't have to build any additional transmission lines if we can help it. So we always try to get close to what's already there. So the particular site we have at Free State met those criteria. The other advantage we have also is that we have a relationship with KU Engineering. We can also do some partnerships there, like we've done down at Wichita State with their engineering department with some of our substation sites. So there's a lot of advantages to that piece as well. So the concrete, the actual substation will have a concrete wall around it, about 10 feet tall, similar to what's at what we call Ren Substation, which is over by Bob Billings and Castle on the northwest corner of that intersection. So it looks something similar to that. But that's kind of where we are. One thing is, we will have operated switches for lights. It won't be automatic. There will be lights operated. So with that, we'd be more happy to, again, like Casey mentioned, answer any questions, providing back to you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. I'm sure there will be questions for you and your team. Luke Sinclair Chair. With that, then, we will turn to public comment. We have, at least on my list, four people registered. I'm going to just work my way down that list, and then other people that are on the Zoom call will be able to have an opportunity to raise their hand if they want to talk, or if there's anybody in person. So the first person I have is Jeanette Walter, or Walter?
Hi, I'm Jeanette. We have, our Neighborhood Association has been working together, and we have presented a PowerPoint to share, so that we try our best as non-professionals to hit all the ticks of our concern. I just want to, you can go to the next slide. I'm Jeanette Walter. I live in the property that will be the opposite of the wall, and I want to introduce you to our neighborhood. Up and down our street of 19th Street, we have, most of the residents have been here for decades. We just have a very, a low turnover of homeowners that sell, and we're really, really excited to get three young families with young kids to revitalize our neighborhood, but most of us have been 20, 30, 35, 43 years, because it's a great place to live. I refer to the cover plan where our communities are vibrant and livable neighborhoods and allow people to age in, which we all tend to do here in this little neighborhood. Half of the Neighborhood Association, I just want to thank the planners that met with us, the commissioner that met with us, and Mary for answering all of our questions. We asked them as soon as we could with them, and everyone was helpful, and we appreciate that. That being said, you still don't think this is an appropriate place to put an industrial substation so close to our house? Next slide, please. Our neighborhood concerns are the very negative effects and real effects they'll have on our property values. When we bought this land, even us, 25 years ago, we felt confident buying land that had backed up to KU property. Even if KU built something that we didn't particularly like and we had to move away from, we knew it would negatively affect our property values, in fact, probably make our property value go up because it was next to KU. We're very concerned with noise. You mentioned the studies, and I noted the decibel reading for appliances and things like that that shut off, and we're talking about a sound that will happen to go for 24/7. So we listened to the power plant by the fairgrounds. It kind of reminded me of someone blowing into a straw, that little whistling sound, but they never had to take a breath, and that will affect us in a negative way. We are concerned about the electromagnetic fields that will be going off these big high voltage power lines. Flooding, we would like a lot more reassurance that the flooding mitigation will work, and what happens if it doesn't? We think, we feel that other sites were not properly looked at, and again, one of the city comprehensive plans states that in fiscally and environmentally responsible manners with the goal of using existing infrastructure and infill opportunities before open areas for development, and ignored. And the aesthetics, I'm sorry, they're not pretty to look at, and I would ask what you guys think if you had one in your backyard. Next slide, please. So what I've learned about this timeline is KU Endowment, West Star approached KU in 2015 and started talking about getting a substation in this space, and they bought the land at the top of the hill in 2016. The first inkling that our neighborhood had of anything is in spring of 2020, when we watched a clearing activity that took out about 12 feet across and a quarter mile of trees into mold about a few days. It was impressive and overwhelming, and when we asked, you know, workers like, "What's this about?", and they said, "Oh, it's just maintenance." In 30 years, we've never seen any kind of maintenance like that. So we questioned that, and we questioned why they were doing it in the spring when there were birds nesting in the trees. And then after that, it sounds like in the fall, Evergy actually purchased the land from KU. Eventually, we were sent a letter in mail in January. In April, learned that they had applied for all of the things that we're discussing tonight, and on May 18th, we were invited to join a Zoom Evergy where we actually had details of the plans for the first time. So in about a month, we've had to try to figure out all the questions we need to ask and how it will really impact us, and if, you know, listen to my reading, how soon can you pack and get out? Well, we can't do it in a month. So we feel like there's an inbound timeline. They've been working on it since 2015. We've had a month to talk about it, and we don't feel like we had a lot of discussion. So my next slide. And the last thing that I'm going to talk about today is that there's a real negative impact on our property values. All of the research that I found says that we can expect to lose up to 50% of our, I mean, it's, it's all over the place, but it's not nothing. If people see big power lines hesitant to move here, if they, if, if we knew Evergy owned the land behind this house, we would have been hesitant to buy it because we would want to find out what's going on. And, and the resale price is permanent. So houses with power lines, they take longer to sell. They are, there is a perception that the big voltage lines, negative health consequence. Some of the studies say it's inconclusive. Others are kind of terrifying. Buyers are put off by the visual appearance, and we are nervous about, you mentioned the fire code, and certainly the residents of the neighborhood. We've talked about, there was a fire just recently at a substation in Cheney, I believe. We would want to know what to expect and how that might impact us. We don't have a lot of exits from our neighborhood. So we think that those, the real effects of our property values need to be addressed, and maybe we feel like we should be compensated for the depressed market value of our homes. Some of our retirees have put everything into their homes, might need the Epi in their house if they need to move assisted living. So that is my portion of our PowerPoint. Thank you for listening.
Luke Sinclair Chair. Then I am guessing it's going to go on to Mr. Mark Smalser.
Good evening, everyone. Hear me? Okay. Yeah, my name is Mark Smalser, and I live on, my wife and I live on 3122 West 19th Street, and I apologize for the condition of the slides. Most of what I want to say in the, is in the pictures. But basically, I'd like to challenge West Star's premise for rejecting the West Campus location, and several of those reasons are listed there, the flatness, how accessible it is for vehicles, and then just talk about removing trees. And so if we can go on to the next slide, please. So I've been doing, looking at the Douglas County GIS information. So I've been doing, uh, looking at the Douglas County GIS information site quite a bit, just to look at our neighborhood and, and measurements and topography. And on this picture, you can see our location is in the lower, our neighborhood's in the lower left with the, the white picture is uh, cut and paste of the, the preparation. And then looking over to the right side, uh, Meadowlark Lane. And then um, the Meadowlark Substation is right there in the small corner. And I basically tried to scale and paste the footprint of the substation and see what it looked like over on West Campus. For us here in the neighborhood, it seems like a West Campus location would be good for everybody. Uh, good for us and seems like it would work a lot better for Evergy. And um, we just want to make sure that it has actually gotten a full review before, uh, and looked at before this rezoning is approved. And just putting it out there, north of us, um, you know, it's really flat out there and not behind any other houses. Slide please. So right here is a detailed picture of the property. And I selected the topographical lines to just to give them of what the ground looked like. And best I could tell, uh, the highest point on the footprint of the substation would be 906 feet. And the lowest point would be 802 feet. And if you're going to make a flat, I assume they're going to make a flat pad, so that's about 34 feet of elevation. So that's filling on the downhill side and in on the uphill side. And so the digging would, would uh, be a lot larger, would be larger than actual fenced substation. Next slide please. And so here is what if put on West Campus. The existing substation is there in orange. It's not very big. Um, it's behind a couple of houses. It's above a very steep drive, it's true. But there's a blue dotted line running off to the northeast. And that goes over to Youngford Hall on, on West Campus. And it's basically a dirt road, double track road, but it's flat and with some gravel and retrimming. It could be a great access road, about 900 feet long. To compare that to the plan, the temporary construction road is about 2,200 feet. New gravel through a field and a permanent road will be around 900 feet and involve a bridge. So just on that note, this would be a lot shorter and uh, less, less work. The, well here, looking at the topography, north of that power line, it is very steep. But on top of that hill, the, the contour lines are maybe a little bit hard to see, but the lowest point from what I could, was about 972 and the highest point was 84. So that's only 12 feet of sufficient difference. And yes, it would take cutting and filling to flatten that out, but from my non-professional point of view, it looks like it's a lot flatter. And the trees up there, they're mostly red cedar and honeysuckle. Eastern redder cedar is native, but it's invasive. It kind of takes over and honeysuckle is also invasive. And so the soil around there is not in great condition. It wouldn't be a huge loss. Just kind of for forestry perspective, you'd also have to balance that with the green space that would be lost in a field. Do I have another slide or not? Okay, so I'll just say, um, I would request that the, the uh rezoning be postponed until we can um, find out if Evergy has really uh, done their deal to, to see if it would be, the West Campus site would work.
Thank you, Mr. Smelzer. Um, next on the list and according to the slide is Tom Dixon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Tom Dixon. I live at 24, which is at the corner of Ginrin Road and 19th Street and my lot backs right up to this property. I probably only going to have three minutes, so I'm going to start off my slide. I won't talk as fast, but I'm going to start with my, so, and please. Okay, the summary says that the nearest neighbors can affect noise level intensities from around 7 to 57 decibels. Depending on whether you have one transformer or four. The diagrams show four transformers and I don't think Evergy would involved in doing what they're doing if they were going to put one transformer. So I'm expecting the four transformers at a minimum. Neighbors up the hill where I am can expect noise level intensities up to 43 decibels for transformers. Noise levels for four transformers is the normal noise level in our neighborhood, which is about 10 decibels. So it would dominate the noise that we hear. Uh, environment is with audible tonal components which are generated by the, the uh transformers as resonances within the equipment. Somebody was talking about blowing through a whistle, taking a breath. Uh, those types of ones are generated by transformers and they can be very annoying. Because they stand out from the broadband noise. We don't expect to get great vibrations. People don't usually talk about that, but the vibration, vibration of the transformers doesn't just go into a sound, it also goes to the ground. You could expect some vibrations that might get transmitted to nearby homes. And because of the cut into the hill, and the hill where I am will not be benefited by this tented wall. Nor would be benefited by vegetative bare that they plan to plant, because we will be upwards away. Next slide. This is a slide you've already seen, but it helps me illustrate what I'm talking about. And since I have a cursor, see my cursor? You can't see my cursor? No, okay, that's too bad. If you see where the cut in the hill is, my lot is right along the top edge of that cut. I'm lot before. Okay? My lot is over 20 feet above the floor of the substation. Lots 45 and 46 down the hill from, or 15 and 10 feet above the floor. That 10 foot wall will not provide either a visual barrier or any sound abatement for lots. Trees can be grown between our lot and the substation because it'll level the surface for the substation. It will cut into the hillside, which extend into the easement, the existing power lines. Existing trees will be cut down and trees cannot be grown near the easement line. So when I stand in my backyard, my eyes and ears will be at least 15 feet above the wall. And I will have an unobstructed view of interior of the substation and an unabated direct line for the transmission of sound. Lots below me, lots 45 and 46 will have the same situation. Now although a vegetable buffer is proposed, when you look at the, the land and its proximity to the easement, it appears that it would be very limited in length and depth. The sound waves over the low wall can also be, which reduces its sound barrier. The vibrations of transformers, as I said, generate ground waves as well as sound waves and tonal noise. I'm concerned about the ground waves because I have a ground source heat pump at my house with pipes which go down into the ground over 150 feet. Even if the amplitude of the vibrations is higher, the continuous 24/7 vibrations will damage the pipe and the heat extender. Next slide please. This is just to help if you're mathematically inclined. Uh, these are the equations that, that you need to really understand what's wrong noise wise. Sound level intensity is measured in decibels, which is a logarithmic definition. It's a logarithm of the ratio of the intensity of the sound to intensity that we as humans can hear at the smallest intensity itself is the energy per second that goes to a given area. I have surface areas there because we're talking about spheres and cylinders. And so this a single transformer produces 65 decibels at 6 feet according to Evergy. And because of the logarithmic nature of decibels, four transformers won't add up 25 plus 65 plus 65, instead it becomes 65 times log of 4, which equals 71 decibels. So four transformers in a row will produce 71 decibels 6 feet away from them. A single transformer by itself acts like a point source and the sound waves expand into a spherical surface, which you see there. Surface area of a sphere, pi r squared. That means that as the sound wave moves out into the air and expands, the surface area through which the energy passes is increasing as the square of the distance. Okay, and that's going to end to lowering of the intensity. And so it becomes an attenuation of the noise at the rate of 6 decibels each time you double the distance. Uh, four transformers, as shown on the map there, will act like a line source, not a point source. Because they're stretched over at least 144 feet. Which, when you're close to it, as some of the neighbors at the bottom of the hill will be, uh, it will look like a cylinder, not a point source.
Mr. Dixon, if you wouldn't mind concluding your thought, that'd be great. We've reached the end of your time.
Okay, I'll be real quick. Uh, because uh, transformers will be in a line, they project them to a surface that looks like a local grid. You have a sphere with hemispheres at each end. And these, if you look at my slider, the point source intensity for a line source is only dependent upon the linear relationship to the distance. Means that the attenuation goes by 3 decibels instead of 6. So the neighbors will see a cylinder expanding at 3 decibels for doubling the distance, which isn't as big as 6. So the sound won't dissipate as fast. The result is 57 decibels for the nearest neighbors. But for my part, it's, I'm not quite with the cylinders, probably be around 44. But the normal level is 40, so you can see 57 is much louder than what we're used to. And it would be mixed in tonal sounds, those individual frequencies. So I'll stop there.
Thank you much, Mr. Dixon. Luke Sinclair Chair. I, I believe the next public commenter we have is Charles Walther.
All right, uh, keep going through a couple of slides, please. I think my name, there I am. Yeah, perfect. So we, we're asking that, that deferment in any kind of room tonight. We haven't had a lot of time. It's obvious that we're trying to, to refute some things here, but you know, we're amateur. The comp project that we were getting a look at is in, uh, out by Fairgrounds. Is the, uh, oh, it's in the Venture Park area. Uh, it's big. You, you could see on the original map picture that it's, you know, four or five times as big as it's being replaced. Uh, the one that's being replaced is one of the loudest ones that I heard when I went around listening to them. Just from a, uh, energy point of view of that type of noise. It just, just seems out of place in Lawrence. I've been in Lawrence since 88 and, and this doesn't seem like the kind of thing, kind of direction Lawrence is going. I know that we, in reading through the report, we kept seeing the thing about uh, strong welcoming neighborhoods and, and this is much more for KU's benefit than the neighborhood. And, and I just found those words to be a little bit ironic. I get them as part of the development code and things like that. But it's not a welcome project within any neighborhood to have, you know, one with the potential of four transformers within in the backyards. Uh, Evergy's been working on it for years. Uh, you can see the WOW cable marking uh, right behind my house and uh, you know, it hasn't been a company in Lawrence since January of 2017. I only put that on there as emphasis of mine. Uh, well, the informational meeting was, was useful, it really, Evergy for, for putting them on. We got a lot of good information in that. But we had to type in questions and sometimes interpret it. And we've not had a face-to-face meeting with Evergy. Whenever people are out surveying the fields and things like that, then we get a letter saying, please stay away from them. They have a job to do and there's COVID. And I get that, uh, but you know, COVID's going away now a little bit and we can meet outside and have conversations. So we'd like to see some consideration of other options. That definitely needs to be further from houses. I, I appreciate 80 feet's pretty good. Uh, but that will not leave space. You know, if you look at the picture of the backyard, that's all behind two or three houses and, and the rest of them are going to be looking right into this, uh, into this thing. And, and some level of view of compensation plus the property, of property value, my apologies. Do I have one more slide on that? So this was the aesthetics and then we took a quick picture of Clinton Parkway in K10. There's the housing unit, housing development back in there. That's not a bad thing to look at from an aesthetic point of view. But most of the neighbors by this property won't see trees because the apparently, uh, digging into the side of the, there aren't any trees in that area. I think that's about where we're at. So we'd like, we'd like to Evergy to come shout to us and talk to, you know, come stand in the then let's talk about it a little bit. I think Mark Smelzer pointed out real clearly that, you know, some other, other locations further from the houses uh, might be beneficial to look at. Wouldn't stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Are there any other, uh, oh, sorry, Luke Sinclair Chair, are there any other uh, people on the Zoom call that wish to offer public comment? Feel free to raise your hand or do the little raise hand feature in Zoom. Uh, I see uh, another person on Mark Smelzer's Zoom call raising their hand.
Hello, sorry, I didn't sign on my own computer. My name is Carrie Smelzer. And I live at 3122 West 19th as well. I did not prepare PowerPoint because I wasn't 100% sure I would be able to get off of work to be here. And the thing that I want to point out, um, about this property and Evergy's plans, um, is that their plans do not currently fill the property. They have left, um, quite a bit of room on their property that has a potential for development. And they're talking to us, they're putting one or two transformers initially, which, um, sounds good from their perspective, but we are quite worried about what it turned into as it gets for future development. And the, the mere size of it doesn't seem appropriate to put right behind houses, especially with future development options. And let's see. And more transformers would be more noise, more construction, um, more, more effect on our lives in the coming years. The we have asked Evergy about this, um, and they have yet to give us a concrete answer, um, about what, what future plans, um, might be. Um, we were asked, um, in type of approval, limitation we put on, um, in however, how it can be put on, um, on future, whether it be on the noise levels coming out of the substation um, or the, the size or anything into it.
Thank you, Ms. Smelzer. Uh, other public comments? Anybody else on, um, on the call that wishes to talk?
Kyle Covey with planning. I see that Michael Allman has raised his hand in, uh, on my Zoom screen.
Thank you, Kyle. Luke Sinclair Chair, Mr. Allman, uh, you, you can make your comments and you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Chair Sinclair. This is Michael Allman. And first of all, I had a question. Are we talking about the rezoning issue at this point? And first of all, I had a question. Are we talking about the rezoning issue at this point?
Mr. Allman, Luke Sinclair, Chair, we're talking about any of the three that you want to talk about. We're entertaining them all together.
Okay, so five minutes for all three. Okay. Well, I don't have any particular objection to the zoning. They're calling for residential zoning, which is compatible with residential zoning. But that seems like a, you know, a ploy, a distraction. Because sure, the zoning is compatible, but the use is not compatible with the adjoining zoning. And I find it kind of odd that they had, oh, not, not quite a quarter section of land for KU Endowment on, to buy for this substation, and yet they bought the site immediately adjacent to residential zoning. That's, that's just odd. So, first of all, what I'd like to talk about, though, is the plat. The plat is in an area where the University of Kansas and the City of Lawrence has proposed to put a bicycle, a bike way through there. And if I could share my screen, I'd like to show you that. Let's see. As you see on this slide, here's the Evergy property. This is the access road that they're planning to build. And this is where KU and the City of Lawrence have proposed a bike way. It's right now a project in the 2022 Lawrence Capital Improvement Plan as a proposal, not yet funded for 2022. The problem, and let me further show you. It's also shown on the current bike plan for Lawrence, this section right here, as a future bike way. In addition, if I may, I'd like to show you. Now, can you see that map? KU Master Plan also shows a bicycle trail at the same location. Well, the problem is that on the plat, Evergy is planning on building that access road on 20 feet of fill. They're going to raise the elevation of that, that land 20 feet to put that road in there, which is an obvious roadblock to this bicycle plan, this bicycle trail. There's no way that a bicycle trail can get over that 20-foot-high street. And that also begs the question, all the soil that Evergy is moving from that site to build this road is an enormous amount of yards of soil that they're saying the topography on the existing West Campus site, it's too challenging. Well, they could easily move that amount of soil on the existing trans, um, substation site if they're going to be doing it on this site. But mostly my concern is that this bicycle trail would be impossible unless Evergy agrees to put an underpass somehow on that, that road. Now, as far as the shared use, the special use permit goes, I also can't imagine how, I know the code calls this a minor utility, but I can't imagine how minor this would be compared to what you discussed two days ago. Solar collectors, which is considered a major utility, totally silent, no electromagnetic fields, no health effects, no visual health effects. So that's just incompatible, just because the code happens to call it a minor utility. It's not compatible with the adjoining use of residential zoning. I don't think there could be any conditions put on this that would make it compatible. And I think the neighbors have pointed out very well, you know, what the problems would be. I think enlarging the existing West Campus substation is, is what should happen here. And if access to the neighborhood is what Evergy is saying, access to the existing substation is not neighborly. Once again, that seems very ironic when they're building immediately adjacent to housing. And they do have the option, as the neighbors pointed out, of accessing the West Campus site from elsewhere in KU property. So for the purpose of my organization who's interested in, in getting this bike way built, that's my concern. I just wanted to bring up some issues that I think the neighbors have, have adequately described. And I certainly wouldn't want my property values depressed if something like this were dumped next to my backyard. So thank you very much. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, Mr. Allman. Luke Sinclair, Chair. Are there other members of the public on the Zoom call that wish to offer any thoughts?
Kyle Kobe with planning. While I wait to see if there's any other hands that go up, I will just confirm that we don't have anyone in the room to speak on this item still. And I'm still not seeing any hands going up right now.
Luke Sinclair, Chair. Thanks for that, Kyle. Then I think what we'll do is give the applicant a chance to, and maybe that would be you, Mr. Lawler, to, to respond to any of the comments that you've heard the public make.
You bet. Trying to get my video back on here. Sorry, for some reason I want to go. There it goes. Thank you. Yes, a couple of things I would like to mention. First of all, one of the comments I made earlier is, one of the criteria is when we go buy a substation site is it's got to be a landlord willing to participate and sell us the land. It's got to be next to transmission lines. When we talked to KU Endowment, this was the area that they told us they would sell us. So we were, we didn't go, we, to expand any farther on their substation site, it is a challenge. You still have to go through the neighborhood. But the new site, we don't have to go through the neighborhood, which was very enticing to us in terms of nights or anything like that. And I know I've heard some of the comments back that, that it's fine, the neighborhoods have, have not noticed it. It's just that we tried to, going forward, we tried to stay out of that, out of the neighborhood with the big trucks. That's just been our, our policy trying to go forward. So I hear what you're saying. I'm just telling you that that's our policy trying to, to move forward. But back to why we, we didn't expand over there, again, that was not a piece of property that KU Endowment was, was had on the table to sell us. We bought the piece of property that, that KU Endowment provided us. So that's, that's why we are where we are in terms of that location. I, I heard a couple of things about in the flooding. Again, Casey can speak to this, but we definitely had an engineering study look at that. We had them evaluated with their, with professional engineering calculations and the PE certified in terms of the, the design on that, on the swales. So we're very confident that we're helping the flooding and the runoff per the site. The, the noise, again, I mean, oh, four bays, and that, that's a fair statement. When, when I want to iterate is we are going to definitely put one transformer. And however, we are trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. So the most transformers we'd ever have in that site is four. But then maybe the second transformer in maybe 10 years, but it would be, this is a, this is a long-term plan. So it's not something we were just going to do. But we also, when we provided this to the, to anybody, just like us, because we live in the neighborhood as well, in the area, we wanted to be transparent about it. We wanted to understand, hey, the full-blown, full plan for this property is the four bays, but we've only put one in right now. Now, again, if something happens where a huge manufacturer comes in or something that we don't foresee right now, we need more electricity, more generation, then that may change that plan. But right now, that's, that's the plan is it's four bays, but it's a long, long-range plan. See, the noise, again, our, our, I believe our transformers, when they're made, they, they, 50 so decibels is what they're, they're, that's what the manufacturer says that they're made at. In terms of vibration, I do want to make a comment that, I mean, these transformers weigh a lot, a lot. And so we, are we, the foundations, the concrete foundations that they sit on are very, very thick. So we have never had in all of our substations we've got within the service territory a vibration problem outside of that, even inside the sub. I mean, they sit down next to the transformer, you can, you can touch it, you can feel it, but if you stand on the concrete. So I, I hear what you're saying in terms of vibration. We've just never experienced that in any of our substations up to date. So, but I'd be more than happy to, to talk about that a little bit more. Let's see, I think, is there anything else that, or any commissioner have any questions that I didn't write down or didn't address that, that came up in the discussion? Be more than happy to, I got a lot of folks behind me to help, so I mean, I know, but I can definitely reach out and get some answers.
This is Casey, the bike path.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Casey. Yes, good job. I knew there was something. The bike path, we, we absolutely, I, Mike, I hear what you're saying in terms of the, the bike path. We have a, we could look at a couple of different options. One option, on which we've done on down by K-10, I see where we can make the culvert big enough where the bike, bikers could go underneath or through the culvert to their side, because we've done that before. Of course, if it's flooded, it's not passable, but there's other areas that wouldn't be as well. But there's some options there that we definitely could go back and look at in terms of our, with Bartlett West and look at the civil design and, and do something there. But we're, that's, I apologize, because that's the first I've heard of that in terms of coming out. So be more happy to, to look at that, talk to Casey and address that. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. I think, I'm sure there will be questions from the commissioners at some point here in the discussion. And so now's the time to bring it back to the, to the commission, excuse me, for discussion. But I might suggest before we start talking that we take a short break so we can come back fresh, if that is okay with everyone, maybe a five-minute break. Coming back around 8:11 or so.
Mr. Chair, the room is ready.
Thank you, sir. Luke Sinclair, Chair. As people trickle back on here, we are now to the point where we're going to have the discussion amongst the commission. And just as a reminder, we have the rezoning request, the approval of the preliminary plat or consideration of it, and then the special use permit. But I think we can talk about anything you all want. So does anybody want to start with questions or comments? Commissioner Rexro.
I thank you, Commissioner Rexro. A question for Evergy. Could you help me understand what the max capacity of this site is? You mentioned you're going to start with one and you've got a long-range plan that maybe will get up to four transformers. What, what is the maximum capacity of the site you have designed?
Commissioner, the, the maximum capacity would be the four transformer base. Actually, the maximum would be four transformers. If we ever got to that point, we needed them.
Got you. Thank you. Now, Commissioner Rexro, do you have, you may not be able to speak for KU on this, but I'm curious about the particular parcel that was selected for this work to be sold to you. Do you, do you have any idea why this was the particular side of the preference for it from a, from KU's perspective?
Commissioner, I, I don't. I, I know enough here to be dangerous. I do know that the, the, the property actually belongs to KU Endowment, not the KU University or region.
Right.
So, but in terms of why they, they selected this particular site, I know that they wanted, they didn't want us to take something in the middle of the property. And I know they wanted it on the outskirts of the, of the, of the property. But I'm sorry, I don't know the whole particulars about the reasoning on that one. My guess is, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Go ahead, please.
My, my guess is that they got some long-range plan for the north piece of that property, and that's why they, they pushed us out. We've actually moved a little bit farther north based on some of the comments that we've got back from the public as well.
Understood. Thank you. Commissioner Rexro, again. I, just an observation that this particular location seems to be about as far away from, I'm looking at a map, as far, as far away from any of what KU has developed now as they can possibly be, which seems to suggest possibly be, which, uh, seems to suggest some of the same concerns about its location as the, uh, the neighbors might have. Thank you for those answers.
Thank you.
Uh, Luke Sinclair Chair, Commissioner Ashworth.
Thank you, Sharon Ashworth, uh, Planning Commissioner. Um, I have, um, several questions, but start with a couple. Um, uh, first of all, in terms of the, um, location, you, you, uh, Commissioner Rexrode opened that up in terms of location. And I watched the public meeting, the video of the public meeting. And one of the things that I thought was odd in that, um, is the suggestion that, uh, coming off of Castle and placing a facility off of Castle, one of the reasons that was not feasible was because it was inconvenient to access the site driving south on Castle. And anybody accessing the site would have to drive north on Castle. I thought that was, uh, fairly minimal reasoning for, one of the reasons for putting, not putting it, um, off of Castle. Uh, that was, um, in the public meeting that I watched. Uh, the other, uh, that was just a comment I had, a question I have about the noise levels. Now, this is going to be a 10-foot wall, concrete wall. How thick is this wall?
I'm going to phone a friend on that one. Mr. Chris Meyer, can you help me on this?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can, thank you. So Chris, I'm sorry, Chris Meyer is our civil engineer within Evergy.
Okay. And the question was how thick is the concrete wall?
That's correct.
Um, yeah, yeah. Well, playing on my memory here, I think it is, uh, one foot thick, 10 inches to one foot. I can look up those, uh, details that we've used on other, uh, projects too, but, uh, you'd have to give me a minute.
Okay. Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commissioner. The, the reason I ask is I know that concrete, while it can be an effective sound barrier, um, is not as, as effective with low frequency noise as it is with high frequency noise. So I'm curious as to the thickness of the wall and just how much of a decibel reduction, um, one would have with a 10-inch wall versus a one-foot wall or however thick it's going to be.
Yeah. And I don't know the answer to that. We don't, um, we don't normally use noise studies as a condition of this, uh, permit that we, we would, we would consult, we'd contract somebody to provide that information for us. And they may have some kind of noise, noise mitigation, um, you know, techniques or, you know, some kind of, I, I think we have used, um, some attenuators before around the transformers. But there's, there's probably things that they could recommend. So I'm not going to go, I'm not even going to try to, to be a, an acoustical engineer here. So, um, yeah. Um, so, you know, we have to do an, uh, a sound study. I, I think that's, that's the way to do that. Let them handle that.
Okay. So that, that would, um, Planning Commissioner Sharon Ashworth, um, I, that would be a critical piece of information, I think. Um, and I'll have one more, uh, question, um, and then I'll, I'll yield and come back to questions later. Uh, on the 3D picture that you showed, um, showing the area for the substation, there were no, uh, power lines shown on that picture. Now, in our packet, we had a picture of a power line and the tower for the power, power line. So I'm kind of curious how those are going to be sighted near the, near the substation.
Okay. Um, Mary, could you bring a picture up for me?
Mary Miller, yes, I'll get that in just one second here.
So Commissioner, to answer your question, and I'll do, start with, so the big tall, the 60-foot tall structures inside the substation will have, will have wire going to them. So there'd be wiring going to the, the two on the left-hand side of your picture, there'd be wires going northwest back toward the water tower. That's not there today. The two on the east side of the substation, on the right-hand side of the substation, those power, the, the wires that come straight south to there and where there's already a, a transmission line existing along, where Mary's showing her pointer, yes, there's already a line existing. So the two on the right-hand side would come back to that existing line. So that would be the additional transmissions line wires that would be part of this project. It would be, those two would come back straight south to the existing line, and the two on the left would go northwest-ish back toward, on the north side of the water tower. It 'd actually be on the, there's a house north of that water tower. It's actually be on the north side of that, of that house. If that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. Um, so does that, so the, the existing lines that run there along the back of the houses there, will they be changed in any way?
They, they will. So, um, Mary, can you bring up that planning, the, the colored map? I think that might be an easier one to, to use to explain.
Not sure which one to me.
There was one that had, no, no, there's one that you had like the, the, the hatched and the, that one there.
Okay.
Thank you. So, um, the, I apologize. Okay, so the red line is where we have an existing easement. So that's, so when I said it's going to leave the substation and go to Castle, that's the path it's going to follow. And I apologize, I thought it would show more. So where the black line is to the substation, there's an existing transmission line south of that that goes east-west along the east-west side. We will shorten, so, and the way the transmission pole works is the very top of it is transmission, transmission is, it takes it like from one substation to another substation. And then the bottom part of those, those wires is called distribution. And the distribution is what feeds your house. So the top portion, the transmission piece would be cut off, and the low part where the distribution is would be left. So if you ask me, will anything change on those structures south of the substation? The answer is yes. We're actually going to lower them because we will no longer need the transmission running along the south side of the substation. And then virtually going east, um, it would, it'd be the same. The, the structures out there today would be the same as they would be when we're done. So east of our, that red line going east would be about the same. Does that make sense? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes. Uh, Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commissioner, thank you. I'll go ahead and yield, um, to other questions. Thank you.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. Other questions? Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. Uh, since we're looking at sighting, let's say we've had three issues brought up, your, the location, future expansion, and noise. Um, Mary, could you put up that one with the 3D rendering of the site with the four That's it. I guess my first question is to Evergy, what is the square footage inside the proposed wall?
Commissioner, I'm going to do, phone a friend again, Casey, Chris, and Casey Coburn is from Bartlett West, or he's our design engineer, project manager. One of you two, please help me with that answer. Because I don't know.
Opening up the site plan right now, I'm sorry, my computer during the break disconnected from, uh, our server. So I'm opening up the site plan right now to get the dimensions.
I think it's, uh, 490 by, 490 by 250. Sorry, this is Chris Meyer. Does that sound about right, Casey? 490 by 250. That's 122,000 square feet.
120, 122,000 square feet inside the wall?
Yeah, 2.8 acres.
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner, um, I didn't know much about substations. I still don't know much, but I sure have looked at a lot of them, read as much as I could. And that seems like a lot of space for just four transformers. Um, so how many transformers could theoretically be placed in a, a substation of 122,000 square feet?
Commissioner, based on our standards today, the different substations, when they were built, had different standards. So based on our standards today, that we follow national standards, four would be the most we would put in the substation. But I, I understand your, what you're saying is, well, I could go look in our substation, looks a lot smaller, and how commissions are so much larger. And my answer back to you is because our regulations and our standard practices for safety purposes have changed over the years. And so this is our standard that Evergy goes with. When we build a substation anyplace, we go with a certain standard. So they're all the same standard-wise. They may have different amounts of transformers, but standard-wise, square footage-wise, they would go based on our standard.
Thanks. Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. So talking about the safety, could you explain the reason, what makes us safer with the additional space? I, I know you had a transformer, um, I guess it was described in the paper as an explosion and fire at Shawnee Mission Parkway in Lackland just two weeks ago. If the same thing happened here, could you explain what the response would be and the danger for fire spreading outside that area?
You bet. Um, so, so the one thing, whenever we build a, a transformer and we have a transformer pad, which, we also have a containment wall, which is not on this rendering, around each transformer, which is approximately four feet high of a concrete wall. So every transformer would have that for a couple of reasons. One is, it's full of oil, and so that containment, so if that transformer would ever have a leak, all that oil would be contained within that, that area. So that, that, that area is based on the size of the transformer and how much oil is in that transformer, if that would ever happen. The other thing that wall does, and a good example is what you just brought up, is a fire that we had over in Try Mission. That fire is contained because with that concrete wall, it makes it very difficult for that fire to go anywhere but that wall. So same thing happened over in Try Mission. When that happened, that containment wall acted as a barrier and a protection area for that particular transformer, which is one of the reasons why we have to have the spaces that we have because of the, of certain things that we now incorporate. We've always had the, the, the containment walls, it just, they've gotten a lot thicker and taller based on our new standards. So, um, so back to that. So yes, we would have, um, folks, of course, the, the fire department, which we're working with, would be all, be, um, involved with that as well. But again, it's, with that containment wall, it helps us contain that fire on that site. And then we, we had somebody within that, they were at that substation within, it was minutes when they got there because of, uh, the amount of, we have safety practices and pieces that notify our operators, hey, you got a problem with this subsite. And they immediately dispatch and they go and the person that's responsible for that substation, get to that site. So they were there very, very quickly.
Thank you. Uh, Tim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. So what is the response time, say, to this substation, if it's built? Um, what would be the response time to have somebody from Evergy out there and shut off the power so emergency personnel could get in?
Um, I, I would have to say, I'm not sure I would know that answer. Here's my, my answer would be is, I'm not the right person that can answer that. So, I, I apologize. However, what I can do is I can get you to answer pretty, I can get you to answer for sure by tomorrow on that question. Um,
Well, we have to vote tonight, so.
So, so here's the deal, on, on this substation here, and that's why I don't want to misput myself, but most of the new substations that we build, it's all connected back into the computer system in Topeka. And so as soon as something happens, they can turn that off right now. There, they, they can, they can take that outage immediately and, and make that happen. I'm, I'm 99% sure that's how this would work as well, but I'm not the expert. But my answer would be is, if there was an issue right there, if there's an issue of a RIN, which is the substation at Castle, uh, Bob Billings and Castle, same thing. Our, our operations folks would know, hey, we got a problem, we got an outage, we got a, we got a fire, we got something going on, they can turn that off. And at the same time, when they turn that off, they're able to move electricity around, so hopefully we don't have an outage on customers. So that's why they're in charge of that, is because if we do have a problem in one place, they've got the ability to maneuver to make sure that the least amount of residents are impacted by that outage. So that, that would be a very, very quick, now, what I can answer to the fire department, I can tell you on energy side, Evergy side, that would be very, very quick.
All right, thank you.
And Dennis, this is Casey Coburn, Bartlett West. Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a local representative that, uh, is on call 24 hours a day.
Yes.
Seven days a week, that is notified when there is an issue that meets the fire department there.
That's correct. Absolutely.
All right, thanks. I guess I'll stop for now on those topics.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Luke Sinclair, um, Chair. Do we have other questions? I, um, I see Commissioner Willie's hand.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to pull us back and talk about the rezoning specifically. Um, Mary, I have a couple of questions, but the first one for you, um, why RS-7? So presumably, um, this so-called minor utility could probably go in any number of, of zoning districts. Uh, the size of it would suggest it is much more industrial than it would ever be residential. Uh, where res, where, where industrial districts looked at to, to kind of be a more honest representation of what's going on, because an industrial district, of course, would require, uh, that buffer yard to be applied on all sides and not just, um, as, as a courtesy, uh, along one side.
Well, that's a two-part question, and I'll just talk about the buffer yard first. Mary Miller, Planner. Um, the buffer yard department is where industrial zoning lines up with residential zoning. If there's nothing developed on the industrial lot, there can be a waiver from the buffer yard because you'd be buffering from nothing. Or if the view is visible from the other properties, we could still require, but the, there is some discretion with that. So the reason we do not look at industrial zoning is this does not seem an appropriate location for industrial zoning. The only way industrial zoning can go through is if you did conditional zoning and took out almost all the uses except for this use. The RS-7 is a much more appropriate zoning, and we could make the golden factors for it. It's exactly the same zoning as everywhere else. If it was zoned RS-7 and they decide not to move ahead with the substation, you would have residential uses and a list of other uses that could be done with a special use permit. So the special use permit provides the transparency. It's obvious that's what's going forward. It requires this kind of a hearing. And, um, I'm going to have to look at my code and see, I think it would require a special use permit in industrial, but let me check real fast.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Mary, while you're looking, I, I see very much your point that this is, uh, the zoning that makes sense in case the, the, um, substation did not move forward so that it would be compatible with the neighborhood. So that makes sense to me.
Yes. If this was zoned medium industrial or general industrial, it would not require a special permit. So if we resoned it to that, we would just be doing a site plan that we would be processing administratively. And I would assume it would go to the city commission because I think the neighbors would appeal our decision. So there's a little bit more protection with going at the RS or the other zoning could be, um, oh, I am misspeaking, I'm sorry. Those are, uh, major utilities are permitted. Minor utilities still require a special use permit in those districts. So they would still have the special permit requirement. But yeah, that's why the RS seems more appropriate.
Thank you. I'll have more questions later.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Luke Sinclair Chair. Uh, Commissioner Butler, did you have your hand up earlier? I wasn't sure if I had missed that.
I did. I was more focused, not necessarily on the zoning, but had a couple of questions for, uh, members of our community that had spoken up today. So I will go ahead and, um, ask them, Mr. Chair, if I can. Uh, my first one was for Mr. Dixon. Um, Mr. Dixon, I, I do appreciate you coming today, and I tried to listen intently, but when people start talking about math and equations, my mind tends to go. So if you could kind of explain to us in layman's terms, the, the noise levels that you talked about, the calculations that you used, um, you talked about ground vibrations as well. Can you give me an example of if I was to step out into my backyard, um, it, what, what would be a good kind of example of what I would hear based on what you were What what would be a good kind of example of what I would hear based on what you were showing us?
Okay, I'm not quite sure what. Be with, but. A normal backyard is around 40 decibels for our neighborhood. And you would expect. From the substation to be above. So it would be in excess of what you normally hear. Now, when two sources of sound are about same, so if you say, in my case, my, say 43. Belts come from the substance. And it's normally 40. They don't add together as three, but because they're so close together. The rule of thumb is that you add three decibels to the bigger one. So actually sound like about 46. Decibels altogether. I don't know if that helps you or means anything.
Well, Mr. Lawler had stated, I think he had referenced 50 decibels. In his. And his statements. And so. Curious how. From what you told us, the the kind of normal and what Mary had stated, the normal. Decibels were like how how much of a sound difference, I guess, is what I was really trying to to figure out.
If you go up 10 decibels, it's like hearing twice as loud. Well, if you went from 40 to 50 decibels, it would be twice as loud to you. Does it help at all?
I, yes, sir. Thank you.
But when he said 50 decibels, I don't remember him giving it. And that's important because the sound. Noise with distance has area gets bigger. So what I was getting, I think I saw in Mary Miller's boots was that it was 65 decibels at six feet.
And. Lawler, could you could you help us with that? Did I not hear you correctly?
No, you did. So my, and I'm not the the expert on this, but my understanding, talking to the substation manager. When we get, we do have, I believe it's 50. Decibel is what's rated for our transformers. When they're made in the manufacturer. But I, that's my understanding.
But you need to know the distance. Is that 50 does measure that eight, five feet?
Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry. I don't know that that answer. I don't know the distance. I just know when I was, when this came up in the public mean that we held for everybody, I know that came up and so I reached out to him. That's what he told me, but I didn't. I'm gonna I'm gonna guess that's probably that's probably six feet. From the transformer, because I believe that's the standard. My understanding is that's the standard that they use when they measure it. But that's like I said, so 50 decibels from six feet of the transformer. And that also wouldn't have, but that also would mean that there's no wall between you and the transformer either. It would just be air, medium is the air.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I apologize, Mr. Dixon. Were you trying to say something?
Well, I just had something I wasn't sure got across and the wall at 10 feet tall, despite asking how thick it was. But being only 10 tall, the equipment inside this. Substance is comparable. And the sound waves coming from the vibrations into the air from them. Those sound waves are going to track over the edge of that wall. It's kind of not really a very good barrier at all height. You can really contain it to build a dome over. It's going to always act over any surface that you put.
And my. Last question is for, I believe, Mr. And Mrs. Walther had both testified about. Property value, market value of their homes. And I believe Mr. Walther made a statement about. Compensation for lost property value. Ms. Walther, I know you said you did some research. Do you? Are you able to provide? Us with any? References for the property value statements that you guys had stated.
I believe you'll find in your packet, I. Some web links to articles. Regarding transmission line news and a law review of studies, including cases in Kansas City where. Juries found it appropriate to compensate owners whose property values were negatively affected by close power lines. Because the resale value. Affected negatively. And if you. In any of those links or they didn't attach correctly. I'm happy to send those back out again. That there's many other goals that. I didn't have time to comb through. But I include these three or four in. In. That I sent into the packet, I believe.
And I have to admit, Ms. Walther, I did not click and read every any links, but I do appreciate your time to the specific. Studies, but I will.
Thank you. And that brings up the point. I feel, I mean, I know that. You are not fairly elected by us, but representing us and I just haven't had a lot of time to research heavy amounts of information. Either. So we appreciate your position. Thanks.
Luke Sinclair, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth.
Chair Nashwood, planning commissioner. Just piggybacking on the noise issue. Again, I went and stood outside of the the substations at 19th and at the curve on Castle. And so I understand what the noise level is without a wall. And so one of the things that was mentioned, Mr. Dixon mentioned that the current, the neighborhood decibel level was the ambient noise was 40 decibels. Was that daytime, I imagine?
I'm guessing.
Yeah, well, yes, daytime, or maybe Mary Miller knows from her measurements if that was, if that 40 decibels tracks with daytime ambient noise. And Mary Miller, for my research, what I've seen, 40 decibels is considered the nighttime sound level for quiet suburban areas. However. With these properties being next to a large empty field, they may have less noise than many suburban areas. Yes, thank you. Sharon Asher, planning commissioner. That's what I was concerned about was the nighttime nighttime, because this is a 24/7 noise. That we are talking about. At 50 decibels and depending on the wall that's put there. How much that will be reduced is critical. Now, I've also biked past. Along the wetlands on the South Lawrence Loop and I, the bike path is behind a wall. And we can still hear that highway. It's another low frequency noise that's going past that wall and you can still hear it through the wall. So I'm a little bit concerned about. Just how much attenuation of noise there will be, plus Mr. Dixon's concern about noise. Over that wall in terms of the how much, how effective the 10 foot wall. Might be. I suspect the noise is mostly coming from the transmitters as opposed to the power lines. I don't know what other equipment in there that might be above. That 10 foot wall, but that would be something to be concerned about. Is any equipment making noise above that 10 foot wall? And I also was wondering if. Maybe Mr. Lawler could address the question of. The topography where the houses that are up higher on the hill, what kind of. A visual buffer is possible for those properties?
I do, one thing I do know we can do, and I was talking to Chris Meyer during the break a little bit about. We do have noise attenuators where we can help depress the noise in some of our substations. So we can definitely come back and do that. I think that would also help with those houses that are above the the wall. That they feel like they're looking down on the substation. We could do that same thing. The other thing that we talked about doing is we probably would reach out. And when we did our noise study, then we could also figure out what that noise was and then what noise depressors we could put in there to help with that solution. So we would lean on our engineering staff to help us do that. But I think there's, in terms of, we've never had to do that as of today, but that doesn't mean that we we weren't. We weren't open to look into that and figure that out. So I don't know. I know they talked about hills, the noise would be up there, but again, at the same time. It's 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 not going to be directed straight to how, I mean, it's going to be open atmosphere. So I mean, it's going to be, there's there will be some. Areas that will get reduced in terms of not reduced, but it won't be just directed at one area. But I do think. That we can get a study and we can figure that out in terms of reducing the noise if it comes out the top of the, over the top of the wall.
Sharon Asher, planning commissioner. Thank you. I'll go ahead and save more questions for later.
Thank you.
Luke Sinclair, Chair, Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, planning commissioner. I just want to follow up on Commissioner Butler's inquiry about impact on property values. I want to thank the neighbors for including links. I didn't have a chance to look at those, but I've seen other studies. And they're kind of all over the board. Depending on who does it and whether they're peer reviewed or not. So it's kind of hard to tell. But. I just want to direct a question to ever G. As part of your special use permit application in paragraph three, you made the statement and it's it's also in our. Report. That ever G has evaluated property values in residential sales slash construction near substations. And has shown that there is minimal impact on the value of the properties due to their proximity. And in fact, in many cases, a property value increased. Did you provide a copy of that study to be included in our packet?
I know that what we did is we did a study in Johnson County around our substations there. Casey, I assume, do you know the answer to that?
We did not include that specific study, Casey Colvin Bartlett West. We did not include that specific study in our submittal.
Well, it's it's quite a claim because, you know, what we have. Often in. Issues that come before us are claims about impacts on property values. And here we're told there are studies that go both ways. And we don't have them. We just have. Your assertion that they don't impact property values, which leads me to another question that was asked by the neighbors. In that May 18. Video meeting you had with them. There was a specific question, could you provide examples of other substations that have been built near. Residential properties? And the answer on that May 18 referred to substations in Topeka and other other locations. But what was not answered. Have you built substations near existing housing or at least this close to existing housing and any other place in Lawrence or neighboring community?
Matt, if you wanted to help me with this one, I'm Johnson County. We did a couple over there. I can't think of the names of them. Matt Armfield is our real estate manager with ever G.
Trying to figure out how to turn my picture on. I'm not going to be successful.
I struggled there too, Matt.
My name's Matt Armfield. I'm the manager of real estate project management. In the north. Area of our territories. So. So, you know, we did. We did what we called internal studies. You know, I don't, they were never really peer reviewed, but you know, to answer your question. On the houses, for instance, so we built our 87th Street sub, which is near 87th and Mize. And when we bought the sub, we had signs all around it that said, you know, future home of a substation. So all these developments went in around it and and then we built the substation. So, you know, everyone talks about the value and value is an opinion. And every person has a different opinion. I mean. An analogy could be a swimming pool. Some people would never buy a house next to a swimming pool. Or, I mean, with a pool in the property. And and would think, gosh, I got to fill it in. Some would buy. And think, well, pay extra because I really want that. So. You know, some people, I mean, I've dealt with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people in my career doing this. With both substations and transmission lines. And people. Some people just don't pay attention to it. Some people would think. Gosh, it's, you know, not, I know there's no one back there. For instance, you know, you could probably go do an appraisal on the houses right next to the existing KUS substation. Or have an appraiser pull those sales. And I would estimate those houses sold for just as much as the other houses in the neighborhood. We we buy substations many times. We do our best to project. And say, okay, growth is going this way. So we go buy a substation like we did the one at 87th and Mize. And and then people get to choose us as a neighbor. And we have, I think, 11 substations in in Lawrence. The 19th Street substation that's right across from the. University, it's surrounded by homes. We have substations. Throughout our territory in every city. With homes right next to them and people buy and sell them every day. And, you know, they don't seem to sell for discounted rates. Because if someone wants to live there, like on 19th Street, it's a beautiful street. But today, we're talking about building a substation. Had we not bought the site, KU could put in a dorm right there. They could put in a stadium and. And would that be a better or worse neighbor than us? I mean, we're going to be quiet. So. It's just all opinion. And everyone has their opinion. But people buy and sell these properties every day.
Jim Carpenter, planning commissioner. Don't get me started on how good a neighbor KU is to the surrounding neighborhoods. That's, that could be a whole nother meeting just there. But I don't think you actually answered my question. Because the example you gave again is you had a site for a substation. It says, we're putting one here and then houses were built around that site with knowledge that there was going to be a substation. Those people made a choice. My question is, have you built a substation? Next to existing housing? Now, the one you're talking, you're talking about replacing, looking at the historic interactive maps for Lawrence. Those houses were built in 1967, 70. And the substation appears just about the same time. So it's hard to know. I can't tell which way it went that. Because I don't know the date of your substation. I just know they appeared on the same aerial map at the same time. So I'm still. Would like an answer to my question. Have you ever built a substation, especially of this size, next to existing homes? Where the people didn't have a choice whether they purchased that home or not. But they ended up with the substation. 85 feet from their backyard.
At 87th and Mize.
Well, what? Whatever their feet is, it's it's close. I've been out there. I've seen.
87th and Mize in Shawnee would be the closest.
Okay.
If you go look at that. That substation is surrounded by 200 plus thousand dollar homes. Probably closer to 300,000 dollar homes.
And Commissioner, we also built a new substation in Manhattan. It's called Appeal Substation. It was. Manhattan Technical College sold us a piece of property to build a substation that's surrounded by apartments, surrounded by residential houses. We built that in the last two years and that was. Setchild. On the west side of Manhattan. So Manhattan Technical College. But yes, that was, that was a lot beforehand. It's part, again, it's part of the university, right? It's a college. It's part of the college and they sold us a piece of property that was surrounded by residential houses and we built that.
Alright, thank you. I don't have any other questions right now.
Luke Sinclair, Chair, Commissioner Shanklin.
Greg Shanklin, planning commissioner. I have a few questions. I'd like to start with Mr. Lawler. I I didn't see this covered anywhere in the materials. What is the proportion of currently? Of the power supplied by the substation to KU as opposed to the community?
This substation, we have a substation and it's generated for transmission purposes. It goes everywhere. This isn't for KU. This isn't for KU, this is for the community. So when we, so when we have a substation, I can't say, well, you know what? 2% is going to go to the university, 4% is going to go to this apartment complex. It doesn't quite work that way. We build a, and we just put, we put electricity on the grid and then it goes, but it's not purposely built just to supply KU with electricity. And as customers come in and people come in, they'll use that, but it's not dedicated for just one location, if that makes sense.
It does. What I'm trying to gauge is some measure of proportion of benefit that KU might derive relative to the city of Lawrence. Is there any way you can put that?
Yeah, KU, here's, this is, it's not a cop out answer, but the answer I have is KU will get no more benefit, no less benefit to the citizens of Lawrence than the citizens of Douglas County. Because it will all, it will benefit everybody. It's just, there's not a piece of it or a portion of it that's directed to go to KU. But I know that's not, the chuckles.
I'm going to push just a little bit harder on this.
Absolutely.
Can you say that KU does derive substantial benefit from this?
Where I see the benefit for KU is in the engineering program. Because there's certain things within the substation that we can help their engineering program with. But as generating electricity for the benefit of KU, again, I go back to my answer is it helps Lawrence, Douglas County, that whole area as much as it does KU. There's no one, because I can't tell you that's going to go to KU. That's, I know.
I understand. That's very helpful. Thank you. Then I have a couple of questions for Mr. Larkin, if he's on the call. Perhaps he's not.
Jeff Craig Planning and Development Services, give us a minute. I think there might be a bit of a technical glitch.
Kyle Coady with Planning, we'll work to see if we can get Randy.
Okay. I, I can, if there's a way to pass this question long term at some point during this discussion, I'd appreciate it. But my first question is whether or not the KU endowment receives the benefits of the cooperation agreement?
This Randy Larkin Deputy City Attorney, I apologize. You cut out right when you said my name, apparently. I didn't know you were asking that. So I'm just sitting here standing and yelling at everybody like everybody else. So go ahead.
I, I was wondering if the KU Endowment Association receives the same benefits of the cooperation agreement that KU does?
The agreement is.
That is to say.
No, the agreement is between KU and the city. KU Endowment is a separate entity and they do not, they're not part of the agreement.
But nonetheless, the property was zoned UKU before.
Correct.
And so I'm not sure, I'm not sure I quite understand that.
I assume that maybe KU had some interest in it. I don't know the quite the details of it, but I know that property was, or is zoned UKU. I don't know if it was a situation where it was KU property and then they sold it to the endowment. And it stayed with that zoning or what the history of that property is, but I do know it was zoned UKU. And our agreement is not with the Endowment Association, it's with the university.
So where I was going with this is to follow on something that Mr. Armfield raised, which was that, you know, that KU could have built dorms on this property. And I, one of the possibilities, of course, is that they could have simply ground leased the property to Evergy. And if that were the case, would we be talking about this at all? Because Evergy then could proceed as if they were, you know, effectively receiving the benefits of 150 foot water.
Theoretically, yes, that could have happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Luke Sinclair Chair, Commissioner Ashworth.
Sheriff Ashworth Planning Commissioner, I'm wondering, Mr. Shanklin's question brought up a question in my mind. Can you tell us, is there a service area for this substation? Do substations have defined service areas?
In terms of a service area, the answer would be that local area, yes. If this, back to my explanation, you have transmission, and you have distribution. Transmission goes county to county, state to state. It's the, it's the big tower overhead that goes, that's where you want to go to the substations. The distribution piece is what goes to our houses. So when you put a transformer in that substation, the transformer takes the higher transmission voltage and lowers it to a local distribution voltage. So then it goes to areas within the city and feeds all the residents. So the answer to your question is yes, it would be the city of Lawrence. But back to, I believe it was Commissioner Carpenter asked about the fire. When we got to go turn a transmission, a transformer off, we had the ability to cover that transformer with other transformers from other parts of our territory. So we had the ability within Lawrence because of the 10 or so different substations that we feed Lawrence, but it also would feed Douglas County. We could also send that over and feed somebody in Johnson County or Shawnee County. So it starts out there, but it depends on what the system is, where the needs are, and where the high uses are taking place. If that, that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. I thought it was more defined than that, sir. Thank you. And my, my one other question is, you mentioned in an earlier, in an early part of the presentation that you had moved the site for the substation a little bit to the north. Can you tell me how far north is it possible to build this substation?
Oh, so we moved as far north as we can with the property that we bought. So originally, we're going to have the substation farther south and we're going to take out more trees. And that wasn't a good idea. So we moved as far north as we can to the property that we own, that we bought from KU Endowment. So it's as far as north as it can go with, with our standards that we meet today and where it sits.
And that's what's on the plat in our.
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
This is Casey Bartlett West. To build on that, on Dennis's comment there, is KU has, or KU Endowment had some stipulations of what could be on their property and what can be on this property. Meaning there was a comment from one of the residents that there was a lot of open space on, to the north and everything like that. KU Endowment will not allow a sway on their property. They wanted the stormwater managed on Evergy's property. So that's why the swale kind of backs up to the north property line through there, is that they didn't want, they could have the tying in the slopes and everything, but they wanted the stormwater routed on Evergy's property. That Evergy would be the one maintaining the swales, keeping them cleaned out, mowing them as needed and maintaining that area. So that's why the, there were some stipulations with it that the swales had to be, the final stuff had to be on Evergy's property and not on KU Endowment's because they did not want to be the ones responsible for the stormwater. Did I explain that correctly, Dennis?
Thank you, Casey. You did. Thank you.
Luke Sinclair Chair, Commissioner Ashworth, did that address what you were trying to get at?
Yes, thank you.
I see Luke Sinclair Chair, I see Randy Larkin's hand up.
This is Randy Larkin Deputy City Attorney. I want to return to my comments to Commissioner Shanklin. I believe that this property, even if it was owned by KU, is actually outside the boundaries of our agreement. So I don't know that it would be covered by our agreement and they would have to cover. It would, even though it's zoned UKU, it would be subject to the city zoning laws. It's not subject to the actual KU property. I think the K, that boundaries of that are a little bit to the east of this property. And it doesn't quite reach this property, as I recall. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you, Randy. Commissioner Shanklin, did you have any follow up on that? Commissioner Rexrode, can I see your hand up?
Yes, Gary Rexrode Commissioner, a couple of questions. From the beginning of this presentation that we talked about, one of the catalysts for this project being to provide for KU West Campus Growth, is that correct? I guess for Mr. Lawler.
That's correct. KU West Campus Growth, any growth in that community, that's correct, Commissioner.
Crown jewel of Lawrence, we absolutely want to, need to find ways to provide for that, get it? If it were not for KU's growth, this project, I think, would be substantially different than what's being proposed. Is that true?
That's correct, Commissioner.
All right. When I think about KU and how KU is zoned today, UKU, if KU wasn't KU, maybe this is a question for Mary, if it were a commercial enterprise in our, in our community, that would be zoned differently. And is that correct, Mary? It wouldn't, it wouldn't be zoned RS7.
It depends upon what the commercial entity, I mean, if it's going to be a commercial use, they'd have to zone it to a district that would allow whatever their use is. So we don't allow special use permits for commercial uses. I mean, we do allow it for bed and breakfast, that's a commercial use that could be here. So if you look at the listed commercial.
Something about the scale that KU is today, that's not bed and breakfast, that's something very, very substantial. And I guess the point that I'm, that I'm trying to understand for myself is within an unusual circumstance where we've got this, this, this very large enterprise in need of a substantial bit of infrastructure to be built. And substations have to go someplace. If this was all residential around there, it would make sense that, okay, this is the place that it would need to be. But because it is to support something that is very different from the area that's around it, something that's much more industrial, is it really fair, honest to say that RS7 zoning is the appropriate thing for that? Given the need really is something more akin to significant commercial development?
Mary Miller Planner, I'm not aware that the substation is intended to serve primarily KU. But if that is the case, and this was a substation for KU, I would have suggested that they keep it on their property and not rezone at all. So I, I'm afraid I don't really think I follow your question.
Yeah, Gary Rexrode Commissioner, thank you, Mary. What I'd ask in the beginning was that if this was designed to be used primarily to support KU West Campus Growth, the answer was yes. And if that, and if it was not for that, would this project be substantially different? The answer was yes. Therefore, if not for KU, this very large commercial group, wouldn't the zoning requirement for that be somewhat different? And if this is a rookie guy asking silly questions, please forgive me, but it seems to me, though, that it's inconsistent, this industrial sized substation being put where it is right next to residence would be treated differently if it were in fact zoned differently for a larger commercial space.
Planning, Mary Miller. You know, if we're rezoning a property for commercial development, then we have to look at all the commercial development that could go there. And so we would not see this as an appropriate location. There's a lot of commercial development that could just go in with administrative site plans. But since this is a large development that we want oversight on, the RS7 district seems appropriate. It's an appropriate matching district. But it allows the oversight. And it's the same oversight you would get if you rezoned in the other district. It's just that you're not allowing all those other uses in. And we would not be able to meet the comprehensive plan requirement to say, yes, this is a great place for industrial zoning. A minor utility use is the same, whether it serves the university or if it serves a large residence. The particular use we're looking at, the utility, doesn't change because of who it serves. So I think we're just, I'm just looking at utility as a utility. And I didn't ask who would be getting their electricity, you know, in the evaluation.
Right. Right. Mary, thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, I mean, it does serve KU, for KU growth, but it also serves for Lawrence growth. So I don't want to make it sound like it's just for KU because it's not. But I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm clear that there's no way I can distinguish how much electricity is going to go to KU versus how much is not going to go to KU.
Yeah, Commissioner Rexrode, thank you for that. I do understand that point. I do, I do also know that the answer when I asked the question, would the project be different if not supporting KU West Campus? The answer was yes, it would be very different.
Commissioner, I misunderstood. It would not be. It would not be much, I mean, the bottom line is with the growth that happens, this would be the same. Because it's all about growth in Lawrence. And we can't get a full loop in Lawrence. So this project would go forward, or at least we would provide the same application regarding KU West Campus Growth, because we expect it to grow, but we also expect Lawrence to grow. So it's all, all of it. It's just not just that one piece. So, so I apologize if I spoke there.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarification.
Luke Sinclair Chair, Commissioner Shanklin.
Greg Shanklin Planning Commissioner. Commissioner Rexrode, thanks for further developing the point that I was trying to make originally. When I asked about the proportion of benefit that was to be received by KU because, and again, this may involve Mr. Larkin. I believe that as a technical matter, we can't read this as a minor utility because minor utilities require public utilities. And to the extent the benefit is largely received by a third party that is not a member of the public, it's difficult to say that it complies with the code. That does require a determination that it's largely to be received by KU, I think. So that was, that was the point of my question. Thanks.
Luke Sinclair Chair. If I could ask you, Commissioner Shanklin, just a clarification, when you, when you talk about the benefit, are you talking about the benefit of the, of the actual service that the substation is providing or the land transaction itself?
No, the service to be provided. Because if, if the station is sized for KU, for KU's future growth, then I think it's hard, it certainly stresses the definition of public utility. And if it can't meet the definition of public utility, then it can't be treated as a minor utility and we can't grant them special use. That's, that would be my reading of the code. That's why I would defer to Mr. Larkin, I think.
You have Craig Planning Development Services Director, I think to Commissioner Shanklin, the point there, the land development.
It provides the definition of utility minor and it includes the definition of a substation as part of that definition there. It also, and I'm trying to wait for my computer to be done with, it's very angry at me, I'm not going to try to scroll anymore on it for a moment. I understand that a substation that serves a specific subdivision can be approved by a site plan, but if it's approved for a division or multiple subdivisions, and that raises it up to that level. So I was waiting for the spinning blue wheel to quit spinning while I can scroll some more, but I believe that Mary can back that definition for me.
Mary Miller, yeah, I can pull up the definition of minor utility.
If I might interject while you're doing that. The point that I was trying to make is you don't get to that point if it's not a public utility. And so how we define public utility itself is the crux. And if the utility serves primarily KU or to a large extent KU, then I think it really stresses the definition of public utility. And if you can't get to public utility, you can't feed it into the definition. It doesn't work.
Yeah, well, I, Mary Miller, I found the definition of utilities minor, and it does use the term public utilities. They have a local impact on surrounding properties. Terrifical uses include electrical or gas distribution substations and others, and water towers. I don't think we've ever made a differentiation between a public utility as to who they serve. If you serve the public and you serve a hospital or the KU or we've never divided our utilities into specifics and tried to aim at what portion of the population are they serving? I don't know, that's the question you're asking. I don't know, that's the question you're asking, or Jeff, perhaps you could, you know, understand this better than I do.
Commissioner Shanklin, that is another way to state the question I was asking. And I, I would be interested in Mr. Larkin's response to that. I, I do believe it's a legal question.
This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. The city is pretty much looking, looking at it, and I tracked down the definition of it. In that this would be a third party who would be providing service to somebody, whether or not it's specifically to KU or mostly to KU or to a surrounding neighborhood, would be deemed a public utility for the purposes of our code.
Thank you.
Luke Sinclair Chair. I see a hand up from Matt Armfield. Mr. Armfield, thanks for raising your hand, first of all. And secondly, feel free to chime in on it if you'd like.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, everyone was discussing who it serves. So I walked that, those distribution lines with a new guy that I have working for me doing distribution and the distribution planners. And the KU West Sub today has three main circuits coming out of it. If you go stand there, there's lines that come out and they go east and they go to KU. There's lines that go west that serve all the houses along the north side of 19th. And, and I don't know where they all go exactly, but across Castle, up and down Castle. And then there's a third line that goes south that serves that whole subdivision to the house, south, and continues on south of that next mile road, south of there, I'm not sure the name of it, but. So three of the four lines, or two of the three lines that come out of that existing KU West Sub serve residential and other commercial churches, whatever. And, and the new sub is going to have one transformer, just like the old, and that's its goal. And then we always, at Evergy, I'm not an engineer, but I sit in a lot of meetings. I stayed at Motel Six, I'm sorry, I had to throw that in. But we, you know, they always do the ultimate plan. They call it the ultimate plan. And, and if, and if like Dennis said, a big industry comes in or, or people build a lot of stuff and start using a lot more electricity, which we're kind of heading toward as an industry, as a society, then we need to be able to serve them. So we're, when we build new substations, we make plenty of space to make sure we don't run out of electricity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armfield. Luke Sinclair Chair. Any other questions or comments from other commissioners? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I wanted to talk a little bit about public engagement. I know we have had a long history of, of asking that applicants, especially for a large project or something that is kind of drastically different than what's been there before, that they spend a significant amount of time meeting with neighbors and answering questions before they come to this public meeting. We've entertained quite a few of those questions here in a public setting. So this may kind of render that bit moot. But for the most part, I think for something that is this big of a deal to a neighborhood, it seems like the one public, the one engagement meeting that, that happened between Evergy and the neighborhood, and it being only on Zoom, which I understand that, that the times for that might not be sufficient for what we had typically asked for from applicants. Can any other commissioners kind of weigh in on, on where they feel that this lies? If, if we have in the past sent things back to have more neighborhood discussions with the applicant before we even took the item up. So we've already engaged quite a bit, but I'm just curious from other commissioners, how are you feeling about that?
Commissioner Carter, sorry, Luke Sinclair Chair.
Thanks, David Carter, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for bringing that up. This is exactly the, the thought that's been on my mind as I have sat here silently for the last hour, just listening and taking in the excellent questions from the other commissioners. One of the things that keeps striking me is that, you know, this is not, I mean, this is not a new invention. This is not an innovative development that's never been done anywhere. This is, you know, this should be a standard engineering project, civil engineering project with standard procedures for engaging neighbors. Now, as you said, I know it's, you know, the pandemic has messed up, disrupted public engagement. But if this is truly intended to have a minimal impact on the daily lives of the neighbors, it should be easier to convince the neighbors that that's the case by way of demonstrating noise mitigation through the height and thickness of the walls and the material. For example, is it sound absorbing versus sound reflecting materials? Also, I believe it was Mr. Lawler talked about the insulation to contain vibrations. The fact that, the point that Mr. Allman raised about the bicycle plan was something that had somehow not even intersected with the, the, the planning of, of the Evergy team. Seems to me that some communications were, were missed along the way. You know, as someone who doesn't live anywhere nearby, I'm, my, my inclination is to think this is probably not a big deal, you know? A, a pod of, of refrigerator noise emitting transformers aren't likely to interfere with my daily life. But I'm, I don't live there and I'm not a neighbor and I'm not going to be directly impacted by this. So my, my inclination at this point would be to ask for a deferral for Evergy to have more time to, to engage with the neighbors and convince them that this is, either convince them that the, the plans they've made so far are truly adequate. Or I think we've heard from the Evergy team, they've been very accommodating in saying, you know, they would, they would be willing to adapt their plans to this or that condition. I think those are the kinds of conversations that ideally ought to take place yet before we commit to giving them license to, to build this out. Because my, and, and maybe this is, I'm going to turn this around, forgive me, Commissioner Willie. I know you're, you're asking other commissioners, but I'm going to take the opportunity to ask staff. At this point, if we were to, if we were to approve all three items before us, what would, what, what leverage would the city still have to enforce the kinds of accommodations that the Evergy team has seemed to entertain at this point?
Mary Miller, Planner. I'm afraid I just heard Jeff. I was just going to say that the one condition we have about the sound study that would go to the city commission and they could make a determination if the sound level is adequate and the sound mitigation measures are adequate. Or this could come back to you if you'd rather. And Jeff, I know I stepped on top of you, so I'll back out.
Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services Director. Mary, you, you said exactly what I was going to say, so I can't add anything more to that one on that part. I would say for the commission's knowledge on that one, you know, your deferrals have to have reasons and ground in your bylaws. Now, you know, for further information and those kind of details there. So we'd need a little bit of direction if that was contemplated for that one. But the, the special use permit does allow for the city commission to add conditions and modifications to this that would allow it to have different effects to it than what you would normally see under a site plan or under something that would be an administrative item. So there is a little bit more fine tuning that can occur in a special use permit in some ways that you can't get with other design items. So Commissioner Carter, I hope that got to your question there.
Thank you, David Carter, Commissioner. That, that gets exactly my, my question. Because it, it seems to me that there are a number of accommodations that likely would still be needed, which are beyond the scope of what we can discuss tonight. That would not, that would convince neighbors that, that their concerns are being satisfied or being addressed. And so I'm not sure what the appropriate vehicle for that would be, whether it would be a deferral or as you say, you know, having a special use permit conditional on, on, and I don't even know what kind of language we would, we would, we would engage to. But, but I, that's basically what I'm getting at, that, that additional measures would need to be made to reach an agreement with neighbors on things like noise mitigation. And, and we haven't even talked about some of the, at least the, the concerns expressed in the, in the letters about, you know, electrical fields and, and I, I, I don't know. I can't speak to that, but I, but perhaps, I, I don't want to defer too much away from Commissioner Willie's point. But I think I would still like to hear somebody address the science around electromagnetic fields. And because again, this isn't new. This is something that, the intersection of the, the electrical grid and residential neighborhoods. I'm sure there's literature out there, but I don't know what it, what it, what it says. So forgive me, I'm going to defer back to Commissioner Willie. You've heard from one, one commissioner, do you want to hear from more?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Yes, I mean, we've done this before. We have deferred specifically to have the applicant do more community engagement. I think something like the electromagnetic radiation or emissions, that's exactly something that is kind of beyond our purview, but something, it's a conversation that the utility would need to have with the neighbors, because they would be able to provide more information about that than, than we could help to facilitate. So those questions, the environmental impacts, I mean, it's a huge amount of dirt moving. They're just, I think there are conversations to be had that might be outside of this meeting, but I happily hear from other commissioners.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you Commissioners Willie and Carter. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any thoughts on that?
I have many thoughts, let's see if I can narrow them in. You know, one of the helpful things that the neighbors provided in their PowerPoint was a timeline. And, you know, the KU Endowment and Evergy have been working on this plan for years. And the land purchase was a couple of years ago. And I could ask, you know, Mary or Jeff, when was the pre-application meeting with Evergy about this project?
Mary Miller, Planner, I'm going to have to look in my file here and find out, I'll check on that.
Okay, I'll go on and we'll get that date. But, you know, there's a point well taken here. Evergy has had the availability of city staff to work with them, to develop plans, to present to us, and it's been going on for quite a while. I mean, it may have been sometime in January, because that's when there was a Lawrence Journal World story on January 27th of this year, which seemed to be from a press release from Evergy describing this project and questions to, to Jeff about what the steps would have to be. So he outlined them there. So at least since January, they've been working with staff. The neighbors maybe had a little notice if they had picked up on what this really was in the Journal World in January. I know they kind of had an idea of what was coming in May. They had that one meeting on May 18th with no additional feedback, one way or the other, from give or take on that. I know that they've contacted Mary with many questions and there were responses and such. But still, nobody knows what the actual plan is until a week before our meeting. And that gives nearby residents almost no time to prepare, to bring in their arguments. And I have to commend the neighborhood, they've created a whole neighborhood association around this. This is what happens in Lawrence. This is how we get a lot of our neighborhood associations. It's because of big projects that didn't seem to really listen to the neighbors or work with the neighbors to come up with some, something that would be acceptable when they come in. And it's really quite unfair to have such a limited amount of time for the public to respond. The public is made up of volunteers and laypeople. Sometimes you get a professional that's in the neighborhood that can weigh in. But usually it's, it's all volunteer time. And they don't have the benefit of actually working with staff to have everything described to them. So, yeah, I, I have problems with all that. And, and in addition to this, should the neighborhood not agree with our decisions and they want to do a protest petition? I seriously doubt that they have the appropriate land area just along North 19th Street to have a successful protest petition, because most of the land surrounding this is KU Endowment and KU, and they're not going to protest. So they don't even have the benefit of that. So, you know, they're forced a super majority decision at the city commission just by virtue of who the landowners are. So the neighbors are really at a disadvantage. And I don't have a problem with having a little more time to look into noise attenuators or suppressors, the way to have the bike path go through here or the future building of it, so it's not obstructed. And, and who knows what other issues? And I know we've heard many of them. And, you know, there's some that are outside our purview, like EMFs. But those are things that should be fleshed out and there should be information, because they're not beyond the purview of the city commission. So it'd be good to have actually more information. And I would still like to see any studies about impacts on property values. I'd like to see that if we defer this when we come back. Because we have assertions on both sides about impacts on that. We know there's literature out there. It'd be nice to have Evergy study and it'd be nice to see, have a chance to review some of this other. Again, that's more a city commission level thing, but I think it, it could help us because the city and county commissions really depend on us on fleshing these matters out. So they have the advantage of learning a lot before it comes in front of them. So I'm not opposed to deferring this, to, to have Evergy work more with the neighbors and to get more information to us before we come back.
Luke Sinclair Chair. Mary.
Mary Miller, Planner. I was just going to respond to the question Commissioner Carpenter had about, we had a pre-application meeting in November of 2020 and Evergy sent a letter to neighbors in January of 2021 informing them of the process. And so the neighbors have been informed and as soon as the application was submitted, you know, we began communicating with the neighbors. When the signs went up, which would have been 20 days before this meeting, we did quite a bit of communication. And so I, I don't have an opinion either way, I just wanted to give you that part of the timeline.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you, Mary. Any other commissioners want to weigh in on deferral, the preferences on that? Or what they, their comments on it, excuse me? Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes, just very quickly, I would absolutely support the, giving the, the opportunity for the applicant, for the neighbors to work again. I was very impressed with what the neighbors were able to bring together in a pretty short, pretty short period of time. I think they had an awful lot of very good information that maybe wasn't considered from the, the point of view of, of the lot looking back, but maybe from the neighbors looking down. And I think there could be some benefit all around. If, if only to help the neighbors feel better about the project and be able to get their input in so it can be tweaked to better suit the neighborhood, or maybe even go so far as to help Evergy and the applicant understand that maybe other locations that they're, that they're suggesting are viable as well. I'd sure support that.
Thank you, Commissioner Rexrode. Luke Sinclair Chair. Commissioner Ashworth?
Chair, National Planning Commission. I too would support, I would support that.
Sharon Ashworth Planning Commission, I too would support, I would support the comments that have been made about public involvement and the information, more information that is needed. And one piece of information that I don't think has been covered yet is the impact on the stream corridor there. There hasn't been a lot of discussion about that. I know there's a nationwide permit associated with that crossing, but I don't know if that might be some, that'd be something worth discussing, given the rainfall changes that we're seeing in the gully washers we're experiencing. I'm a little concerned about the speed of water through that and whether the culvert is sufficient. I've been on properties lately where culverts are going over stream, but it's still blasting out the stream banks with these rains we've had. So I'd be curious about that nationwide permit that was given for that.
Thank you Commissioner Ashworth. Luke Sinclair Chair, excuse me. Commissioners, does anyone else want to offer their comments on this topic? While thinking about that, I want to give Casey Colburn an opportunity, he raised his hand. Mr. Colburn, did you have something to say about this?
Yeah, um, thank you very much, Casey Colburn Bartlett West. Um, very quickly, just two things. One that keeps on coming up is the bike path. And a lot of that is the master plan that was shown and everything, that's actually lines up with KU Endowment's property, and they're kind of in control of where the bike path would go. Evergy, if you look at the preliminary plat and everything, doesn't really own any property east of the substation. So that was a comment from David Cronin about the, about the bike path that we responded back to in our initial smittle, that that is part of KU Endowment's, a discussion with them, because Evergy doesn't own that property and they don't control the property up to Bob Billings. But the culvert is sized, and so this leads into the next comment about the stormwater. The culvert is a triple 14 foot by 12 foot box, so it's 14 feet high, 36 feet wide. It was, a Hecarass study was done, submitted to Matt Bond, reviewed, and that will all go to, that's been gone through the Corps of Engineers, and now the next step will go to the state of Kansas for review for a no rise, meaning the water surface elevation won't change. It's pretty much being designed to KDOT standards for a bridge. So we're just not putting a few pipes in. It's matching what's upstream at Bob Billings, upstream at Bob Billings and Lawrence Avenue. So those are things that have all been reviewed and approved by the city of Lawrence. So just, I know that, that was just a question there at the very end, and how the bike path tied into all that. So thank you very much. I know we're getting late into the night, but I just wanted to make sure we hit on that real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn, Luke Sinclair Chair. Commissioner Ashworth, I guess, on the flood and stormwater issue, do you have any thoughts in response to that? Or is it something you'd still like to have more information on if we were to defer this?
Thank you, Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commission. I guess I would just like to see the language in the nationwide permit, but that's, uh, that gave me a lot more information than what I was aware of, and I would like, I'll go look at the Bob Billings and Lawrence Avenue area that was spoken of.
Okay, Luke Sinclair Chair. Commissioner Willie, I see your hand, I just want to ask though first, Mary, in light of Mr. Colburn's comments on the bike path, I guess maybe just for confirmation from you, is, is the bike pathway, based on what he's saying, outside of the property line where this would be?
Mary Miller Planner, yes, it is, it's located on the KU property, and the city engineer had asked if they, because they're going to put in pavement, you know, for their temporary construction access, a little to the west of where the bike trail is shown on the plans. And he had asked if they could leave that, and they could use it as a base for the bike path rather than having to put something in later. And Evergy said, well, that you'd have to talk to KU, because that land, we don't own that, we can't say if we would leave it, you know. Right now with KU, I think they have an agreement, they would remove it. So the city can still work with KU about seeing if we can keep what they put in for their temporary construction access, to use that as a basis for our bike path. And no one had mentioned the crossing, that I don't recall the crossing, but I could talk to the city engineers and see how they envision that working, if they feel the culvert would be the adequate place. But if we defer it, I can certainly check into that with them. And perhaps they could come to the meeting or just provide maybe written comment to it, so you could have that.
Okay, Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you very much. Commissioner Willie, I saw your hand go up.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, Mary very much covered the point I wanted to point out.
Very good, Luke Sinclair Chair. And Mr. Allman, I see your hand up, I assume you want to speak to something related to the bike path, and that's fine. If you wouldn't mind just keeping your comments fairly short, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to point out that, yes, Evergy does not own the property east of that site, but they are putting 12, 20 feet of fill in that drainage way. So apparently, KU is an agreement, or KU Endowment is an agreement, that they can fill 20 feet for their road. And Mr. Lawler has pointed out that they're willing to put a, an additional culvert underneath it for the bikeway. So I just wanted to clarify that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allman, Luke Sinclair Chair. Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? Any commissioners, that is? It's getting late, but I, Mr. Colburn, I'll let you speak to this one more time, and then we might just need to move towards seeing if we have to, a motion in hand.
I just wanted to clarify the last comment, this Casey Colburn Bartlett West. I don't think Mr. Lawler said an additional culvert would be put in place, but one of the three culverts could potentially be used. Just wanted that for the record.
Okay, Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you. I guess there's been discussion of a number of, I guess, subject areas or topics that we'd be interested in having more information on, in addition to seeing if the neighbors and Evergy would be able to have a little more of a discussion. And so I, I guess I'm wondering if anybody wants to try to summarize what, what information we're looking for and even consider making a motion? The reason I ask that, I guess, is based on what Jeff said, and I, the bylaws do indicate that we should, I mean, deferrals are to, are for the purpose of gathering adequate information to make a well-informed decision. So I can see his point in us giving direction on that, instead of just saying, you know, we're deferring so that the applicant and the neighbors can get together and talk. I think we ought to ask for the four or five subject areas that we're really interested in when we, when we do this, if this is the way that things are going. Commissioner Carter?
David Carter, Commissioner, I, I can kick things off if we're making a list here. I think the, the obvious points that came up earliest were around noise mitigation. We had, both in terms of the, the height, the thickness and the material of the, of the surrounding wall. There was also the noise dampening qualities of the, of the foundation. So getting, getting some sort of specs that would, that would, that would convince us and, and presumably also the neighbors on, on that. And then, of course, this, this issue that, that Mr. Allman raised about the bike path. I think the issue of the, of the junction, you know, crossing the road, whether that would be by way of, you know, using the, the culvert, the existing culvert, or I shouldn't say existing, but the planned culvert for the road, which obviously as Mr., I'm looking for my, as Mr. Lawler mentioned, would have to be, there's safety concerns around that, you know, when you've got a storm event, you know, I know we've seen, you know, bicycle paths that say, you know, impassable during high water, but I mean, that's, that's a real safety threat, using a drainage culvert for, for, for transportation. Let's see. I'll, I'll yield to anybody else who wants to add to the list.
Luke Sinclair Chair, Commissioner Ashworth?
Sharon Ashworth Planning Commissioner, one of the things that jumped out also is the property value question.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you Commissioner Ashworth, Commissioner Rexrode?
Yeah, Commissioner Rexrode, consistent through at least the early part of the neighbors' feedback was suitability of location.
Thank you Commissioner Rexrode, Luke Sinclair Chair. Was there anything else that anyone can recall or think of? From the commission? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie Planning Commissioner. The buffer, the buffer yard conditions was another issue, and discussing impacts, potential impacts of EMF and probably power lines that are already existing versus what the substation would add or subtract.
Thank you for those extra ones, Commissioner Willie, Luke Sinclair Chair. Happy to entertain any others from the commission, or if someone feels comfortable making a motion. I think it's probably a good idea to have a motion on, on whether or not we want to defer. Because if we don't, we, we have other votes that we need to take tonight, or other motions to consider. Commissioner Carter?
Thanks, David Carter Chair, I did it, David Carter Commissioner, it's habit. I have a, a question for staff, actually, whether we would need individual motions. If, I mean, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, we have the option to, for example, vote on just the rezoning. And then, and then have separate motions for the site plan and the special use permit. But I guess I would just like to ask Mary or Jeff whether we would, could have just one motion for all three items, if we were to defer those, or if we'd need to make individual motions for each.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, in the instance of that, I would say you could make a motion for one to defer all three applications, because we have the guidance without, from, I mean, we have the, the list that you provided for guidance on the information there, so we could, we could take that as one motion in that instance.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter Commissioner, with that in mind, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to make a motion if you feel the time is right.
Please do.
Thank you, David Carter Commissioner. I move that we recommend deferral of items 2A, 2B, and 2C in order to give the applicant adequate time to gather information on the, on the items that we have listed, requesting more information. And also to engage with, with neighbors on the same subjects.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you for that, Commissioner Carter. And just before we, I ask for a second. Well, Commissioner Shanklin, did you have a second, or did you have a comment to make?
Commissioner Shanklin, I actually had a comment. I, my question is, it, it seems to me that we want to give the applicant more time to, to generate the information, but isn't there also an instruction to staff to facilitate a meeting? Or some, some kind of communication between the applicant and the neighborhood? Because I think that's one of the things that will help us to rarefy the issues that we're going to be deciding on once this new information comes to light. But I just wanted to ask that question, if we wanted to modify the motion to, to include some instruction to staff to facilitate those communications. Thanks.
David Carter Commissioner, if I may, I, I'd like to defer that to, to staff and ask whether that is a, would be an appropriate part of this, or whether it's, it would be adequate just to direct the, the applicant to engage directly with the, with the neighbors. What, what, what is more appropriate or customary in this, in this case?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, the customary action that it would be for the applicant to talk with the neighbors and, and structure those meetings, because they might have considerations and timelines that we're not aware of or couldn't quite maybe mimic in those instances, and may also just cut out a potential third person out of the discussion to allow more communication between the two in that. So usually it does not involve the planning office in those discussions, but we can serve in that if, if necessary.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter Commissioner, forgive me, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Shanklin, does that, does that satisfy your, your question?
Very good, Luke Sinclair Chair, we have a motion to defer for things set forth by Commissioner Carter in the motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Rexrode, seconded by a hand motion. Does anybody have anything they want to say before, any commissioners have anything they want to say before we vote? I'm not seeing any. So Jeff, would you mind taking the roll?
Certainly, Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much, thank you to the neighbors and other public commenters that stayed on, and also to Mr. Lawler and Mr. Colburn. Appreciate you guys handling so many questions. And good luck. Luke Sinclair Chair, I don't remember if I said that, it's late. So that then concludes the regular agenda items. I'm looking at this right. But we do have some miscellaneous items of business, or I guess one. And that's to consider some appointments to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board. And so Commissioner Struckoff and Commissioner Sands were both on the, were both the Planning Commission appointees on the, on the MPO. And they obviously have moved along, and so we need to consider who else to put from our group on the board. And we, we need one city appointee, one county appointee. And so I guess I have a couple of nominations to make. And I, just to check, a point of order though, Jeff, does it need to be two separate motions, or can it just be one? Or two nominations, or just, can it all be handled at one time?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, we would advise to take each nomination independently to allow for separate votes.
Okay, Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you. Well, so for this purpose, I guess I would nominate for the county appointee on the MPO, Commissioner Shanklin? And would either entertain other nominations or a second on that. Commissioner Carter, I see, Carter, I see your hand up.
David Carter, Commissioner, if there are no other nominations, I would second that nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Carter. Any other comments on this or nominations? Very good. Jeff, could you read the roll on that?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, certainly. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes, and thank you.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Luke Sinclair Chair, yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner Willie. Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin, for being willing to do that. And then that leaves the city appointee. And I would nominate for the city appointee, Commissioner Carter. And am happy to hear other nominations or a second on that nomination. Commissioner Butler?
I'm seconding it.
Motion or the nomination is seconded, Luke Sinclair Chair. Any other comments before we vote? Not seeing any. Jeff, can you read the roll?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Very good. Thank you both, Luke Sinclair Chair. Thank you both very much for your willingness to serve on that board. That's all the things that we have on our agenda. Jeff or anybody else on staff, is there anything else that we need to consider, any other business before we adjourn?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, I just wanted to pass along a note that Tanya Voyn sent me today that on the Douglas County zoning and codes website, they have a dropdown menu that includes information related to text amendments to start kind of showing links and getting that set up for public feedback. So I just want to put that out there for the commissioners to know so you can stop by there to see the amendments and the, and the feedback processes. It's still a little, from what I understand, a little bit of work in progress, but it's getting to the point where it's about to be turned on and ready to go. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that item. But otherwise, that is all the information we have this evening.
Luke Sinclair Chair, thank you so much, Jeff. Excuse me. Do we, unless anybody wants to talk about anything else, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Ashworth, is that a?
Yes, so moved.
Very good. Luke Sinclair Chair, second. Commissioner Carter by a hand wave. Commissioner, sorry, Jeff, can you read the roll?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexrode?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Very good. Thank you all so much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
See you next month.